We're doing anything else, right?
Okay, we'll call the city council work session on October 30th, 2024, 6:00 PM to order a vote call, please.
Mayor Allison?
Here.
Tom Baylor?
Here.
Kathy Sherman?
Here.
Casey Kinsman?
Here.
Wendy Rainey?
Here.
Dave Zastro?
Here.
Kristen Smith is absent and Ken Jones is absent. That's a form of cancel.
Here, our work session topic tonight is the budget. Seth, you want to take it over?
Okay, so Cheryl's gonna help out because she's got the laptop and numbers and we can do some math if they need to. You know, we'll be doing it in my hand. This is what I'm thinking and you guys, if you want to do something, never do let me know. So I'm thinking that we talk about revenue first, so and then we'll talk about expenditures. Does that feel like an okay order for you guys to go in?
Sure.
Okay, so everybody should have the new revenue. We year-to-dates are updated, so sales, all the sales tax. We also found out a couple increases in state cap things that we did. So we have things updated that way. And then we could just start right with sales tax because I'm pretty excited. That is up substantially. And we didn't change the amount. I wanted to discuss all these amounts with you guys. So for straight-up sales tax, in the past, we had budgeted 3.75 those. That was when we originally did revenue. And I can't even remember when that was.
I think it was October 2nd.
So as you can see, the tax, the revenue, we are at 3.828. Also, that is more than we had in '23, which is good. We looked at the revenue. So this year's sales tax, other than what comes in early for the fourth quarter, is pretty much done. Because the way it rolls is the jan- it's due January 31st, so that goes into '24. So we already have January of '23 in our totals. I learned that today.
But we do expect to get another couple hundred thousand in on the third quarter because it's not due until tomorrow. Some people do wait till that, like just regularly, they wait till that last day. So we looked at what was outstanding and we will exceed 4 million for '24.
And I would also look at being '24, bad same year, you know, less sales tax, you know, less money spent in the community. So budgeting for a hopefully normal year for the future, as it was in the past, not necessarily budgeting that a lower revenue, just because this year will be a little bit lower. So we were talking about 4.4. I just want to concur that you guys are comfortable with that and or if you want to have any discussion about that.
Is that for the proposed, changing the proposed to 4.4?
Correct, changing proposed to 4.4.
I just, on a totally side note, I just want to, it's, let's have some sensitivity around the taxes. We've just increased them this year and it's, I guess, good we're coming in higher. But at the expense of everyone in the community too, I guess that makes some sense. Yes, we're excited we've got more taxes than crap. We discharged our community more taxes. Just kind of two sides. I hear that from the public there. That's another one thing. Thank you.
But you think this year we're gonna be a little over four, 4.1?
4.4 or 4.1?
He said this year.
This year.
Oh, this year.
About 4.1. She's suggesting to put 4.4 in as a proposed.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Are you comfortable? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know I'm on the line. Sorry, I'm a little late.
Okay, thanks again. Just speak up if you want, pipe in here. We're talking about revenues, sales tax.
Yeah, I kind of caught a little bit of that. I think that budgeting next year a little bit higher because it's gonna be an odd year with, hopefully a lot better fishing season. I think that's a pretty reasonable thing to consider.
We also talked about upping the penalties and interest, or penalty, penalty first and interest. Because every year we've been higher than 12,000. It's gonna go maybe to 14.
On the property tax or sales tax?
I'm sorry, on property tax, yeah, I jumped upwards.
Can we just go down from the top?
Yeah. Do you want to talk about property tax first?
Yeah, let's just go down.
Okay, I, I said in the past that we needed to increase property tax for, you know, multiple reasons. I still agree with that. That is, we are at 3.1 right now.
Susan, what's the, what's the mill right now?
230 or 40,000, I think, per mil.
That's how we have to increase it. We get a number and that's an increase.
But an important thing to note too is we were 88% on the sales ratio with the state this year. The assessors haven't talked to me about an exact plan, but we are meeting with them when they come here, the first week of December. But obviously, well, it's an interesting relationship. They like to follow statute and keep us at market value. That's what we're supposed to be at for assessed value. I think 88 is the highest we've been in a while. And I've encouraged them already to, let's just stick with normal increases on percent complete, on anything that's being built. But maybe nothing across the board unless they see something glaring in doing their analysis with, you know, more current sales that they may have. And if that is the case, then it would, at least if we increased a mil rate, but didn't really increase most people's value, it would be slighter than if we did both, you know, if everybody went up 10 or 15% and the mil rate went up by a half a mil or something, or a mil, it would be compounded. It's still, well, a little early too, because we haven't spoken with them. I guess I should have before tonight.
Mr. Mayor, is this the, do we have a lot of outstanding property tax that we're aware of that should be?
This is the first I've seen this 3.1. I don't know how we collected so much extra because we bill to.
Yeah, but we did, we did 3 million, but when the, it came in a little bit over that number because.
A little bit though. I thought it was only a little. You know, it, it can be from years past outstanding, but.
14,000 dollars in penalties. So, I mean, we know some passed or paid this year, some of the last.
Certainly, certainly they were.
I'd put it at 3.2.
So one mil?
And raise the penalty? Did you want to raise the penalty?
No, penalty is just, I don't want to raise the, what's charged for the penalty. It's the penalties that are collected.
What we budget, you want to raise that?
Because it seems like for the last many years.
So what were you suggesting for that, you think? 15?
I thought 14. We had 17 in '23. We're already at 14 now, but.
So what if we do 3.1 for property tax, 14 for penalties and 2,000 for interest?
I mean.
That's you guys.
So leave the two at where it's at for interest? So you're saying or add an additional two?
No, I was just saying leave it at two because we haven't collected that much this year.
So.
Well, I'm only hearing.
Anybody disagree with that? If there ever is some believe it would be 14 potentially.
So if we raise half a mil, what, that's 1 point, or 120,000 roughly?
Yeah.
Three, 3.1 would be half a mil.
That's probably more.
I can see where we come out here at the end.
I was gonna say, I think.
I'm just going down the line.
Yeah.
Then we can go back and go down the line.
Okay, so half a mil is 120?
But we're going 3.1 or 3.12?
3.1.
3.1, change that to 14. Okay, you're getting this, right?
Real quick, are we able to see the edits in here as we get to the end? I think that might be helpful as we're, instead of me trying to do independent math here if you're already in Excel. If not, that's fine.
We can, what was that?
We got notes alongside.
Except.
That aren't necessarily for.
Should she just zoom and share? But then we need that click share for that.
You can tell us at the end. That's not gonna be that big a deal. That's great. I totally understand that.
Okay, Cheryl, will you explain the negative and the positive in sales?
For the AR SSC?
Yes, please.
That is the, the sales tax that is collected on online purchases or purchases out of, yeah, online purchases. The fee that they charge us is the contra part and it comes just directly out of what we receive. So we book it towards that account. Explain what you own it, okay?
So the sales tax number below that reflects that or doesn't?
Reflects the amount that we've brought in, like the net amount.
Okay.
They take a percentage.
And then it's subtracted out in the total at the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a gross amount, sorry.
And that comes in monthly. And do you think October's in the 390?
October is in the, yes, is in the 390. We just received it a couple of days ago. The one we received just a couple of days ago is actually September. So we have October and November still that we'll receive this year. And those months are usually our highest months. We're doing some holiday shopping.
Everyone's at home.
Last year, December or November came in at right around 70,000. So they jump up significantly these next two months.
And that was at 6%?
Yes.
So that's good to know.
Part of the year here, they were not notified of our increase. So this 3.90 is a few months at 6% still. So as we were looking at next year, the full year will be at the 7%.
But the next two months it's at 7%?
Yes, 7%.
So when we did the math, we kind of thought we might hit about 500,000 this year.
Yeah.
We thought we hit 525, it'll still be manageable next year because we'll be all at 7%.
I'm in favor of that.
I am too. That makes sense and it's interesting that October and November still aren't in that total, so that's very interesting.
Yeah, they've been doing a really good job at getting that enacted for us.
The list just keeps getting bigger.
Yeah.
So you get it real time off the month, that's easier to type for.
Yeah.
And also Amazon sent separately, correct?
Yes, Amazon is not included in this. It comes in through sales tax. They remit directly to us.
Really?
And is that monthly as well?
That's quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
We have had a few people concerned about their online shopping, that they got charged tax. We do get an itemized list, so if anyone ever wants to know whether the vendor they're using is remitting properly, we can look it up.
Do we have a number comparison from the online shopping and what our local stores bring in sales tax?
The sales tax, the line under the sales and use taxes for the year is coming in at 3.8 million so far. Is that what you're asking?
But that includes Amazon now, you're telling us.
Okay, yes.
Yes, so we could get that, but we don't have it right here.
Right.
And then also it's like.
I'm just curious how, how we're doing there.
It's not items, like.
One more time, Tom?
I was just curious how, if there's a comparison from the online sales, which takes away from our local business, what that's bringing in compared to what our local business, when I say that, like the grocery stores and other shops in town bring in, just a comparison number.
They'll get us that number, Tom. It's the 3.8 minus whatever, Amazon, right? Is Amazon the only one that does that?
Off the top of my head, they're the only ones I can think of. And it's, it doesn't compare to the overall monthly one that we get from the AR SSC.
Right.
So thankfully, it does appear that most of our shopping is still being done locally, but.
Yeah.
And is it all of Amazon or like only some of their vendors or only them directly? Can you tell? You know what I mean? They have sometimes so many.
Well, when you talk about they charge you sales.
Yeah, I think it's just Amazon as a whole.
Amazon as a whole, okay.
If you ship it to Cordova, they charge the 6,000.
Well, it wasn't that long ago we didn't get any of that, correct? So I'm just curious.
Yeah, we're killing it. We're killing it.
Okay, so we're at 4.4 for regular sales tax. But yeah, vehicle rental surtax?
Well, public accommodations first.
Can't stay in line. So yeah, that is substantially up.
What is this?
20,000?
I mean, I can see how much it is.
Oh.
What, who, what it, or the public accommodations, that's this.
Sales, that's us.
But is it the full 13% or is it just the six?
No, it's just the six. Seven goes towards sales tax.
The seven is in sales and this is just the extra six.
So I guess, sorry I'm a late, but so the 4.1, is that what the projected is for '24 on the sales tax? Year-to-date, that's what we're projecting to get by the end of the year?
We're projecting 4.1 and we changed the proposed 25 to 4.4.
Okay, I was just wondering, is there any consideration for, I mean, it was 4.75 in this year's budget. And, you know, it was low at 4.1, but it was, I mean, historically bad commercial fishing season. So is there any thought that maybe it would come in at 4.7 if it was a normal fishing season?
Well, we hope. We made those predictions based on real numbers last year. So I think we used a lot of the 22 and 23 actuals when we made the predictions for '24.
So you have the number, we looked at three, we looked at the total for '23, added a percentage to it. And then tried to get a little bit, I mean, '23 was a decent fishing year, decent kind of year, fairly normalish. Although this year should be really good, just I mean, if same seasons occur with the pinks because of the year. I mean, that's how we got to 4.4.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason why we came in below prediction was because of how bad the sailing was. So if the sailors would have made more money, I mean, I spent a third on groceries than what I normally do. We only fished for two weeks. So, you know, a lot of, also I burned only, I don't know, five or $6,000 in fuel and normally I'm burning 20. So there's a lot of tax there that the city didn't get because we just weren't fishing. So I, if, if we felt confident with the 4.7, I would feel confident bumping it back up to that. So I don't, I mean, we're gonna have, it's an odd year. Pinks are generally better on odd years. I think we're gonna be back up with the market, the price of fish is gonna be better. And I think people will be spending more money. So I hope anyway.
I like the 4.4.
I like your enthusiasm. Thank you for the positivity.
Well, I mean, if, if 4.7 is based off '23's numbers, I mean, we got 18 cents a pound in '23. We're gonna be up to 35 cents a pound next year. So, yeah, I don't know.
The 4.4 is what we based off the '23.
I don't know how we got to 4.7 last year with 3.4 the year before.
I want to see that number looked at because I'm not sure that we ended '23 with 3.49. That seems very low.
Anyway.
That's it. So basically the question is.
Let's leave it at 4.4 for now and we can always come back to that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so public accommodations, we were, I think we put in like 2.20?
And how often is that collected? Have we collected all that that's done for the year? Third, that's done quarterly?
Well, they have one more day. They can turn in their, or third quarter tomorrow. Tomorrow's the last day. I don't believe we have a lot. I think there's a couple.
I'd be fine with 2.20. That makes sense. And we're gonna capture all the events that are gonna be in town this winter, fall, that we don't normally have.
Those will come in.
Right, that'll be for next year.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah. First quarter. Oh no, even fourth quarter of this year, which we get next year.
Right.
Will be higher with Florida Fish and those two other conferences. There was a lot of people staying. This place was popping, October and November.
And we're already getting bookings.
So 2.20?
2.20.
2.20. Vehicle rentals kind of coincides with the public accommodation tax. We were considering 20, I should.
20 is good.
We were thinking we should leave the math tax at about 200,000.
What's each kind of that?
Marijuana, alcohol and tobacco. I had. You know, 2.10 in '23. And this stays at 6%. It's not.
We do have a couple vendors that will probably turn in tomorrow and that one as well.
I, I almost think you could go higher.
That's a good point. So it stays at the 6% or is it the same?
Or is it 6% and then 7%?
Right.
The seven goes into the regular sales tax. Which is interesting with our new sales tax code, it specifically says 13. So that will be a new form and possibly a new way of entering it, which would make it harder to track year to year. I'm not sure. We could talk about it.
Let's keep going. Okay, so do you want to do 2.10? 2.20? 200?
I mean, to Ken's point, but there wasn't as many people in town. They weren't in here. They weren't in old.
They were in town.
Oh, I guess they were in town.
You can collect that 30 on Budweiser on the same boats. You can collect that 30K.
I'd leave it at 200,000.
Cheryl, we think on the penalties and interest on sales tax, we are increasing the penalties. We are committed to moving forward with.
Enforcement?
Yes.
We're already starting.
So what were you thinking? 15?
Yeah.
12 at least, 12.5 at least. Well, actually, if a lot of people are behind right now, that's gonna be a heck of a lot more penalties and interest. Not a lot, sorry, some.
We're at 12.5 now and I feel like it's been accurate, looking back historically. I think it's been a pretty spot-on, regular-type year for that. Yeah, the penalties are going up. So that will either encourage people to file and pay timely or so. Your guys call.
Instead of 12. We.
But the penalty rate itself is staying the same. It's just we're enforcing or we're actually on the fee schedule raising the penalty?
The penalties are in code for sales tax.
We're about to change that.
And there's why they're raised.
Oh, okay, they are. So the percentage is being raised or just?
The flat fee part and the percentage.
Oh, okay.
That's right. Yeah, let me just look at that.
And, yeah, and, and we will be enforcing. Cheryl, let you do this one too.
Is it, are we to the in lieu of?
Well, penalty and interest on accounts receivable.
Okay, so those are one-offs, yeah. It's a very small amount that we bill that way and the penalties just come in on a different line. But it's negligible. Keep it the same?
The in lieu of tax payments, we got 531,000 this year. So we were wanting to just mimic that, but 531,000.
And is this the same other than the tomorrow being the last day, this should be everything? What, how is this?
These came in already. We're done.
It's a state shared.
Five thirty?
5.31.
We haven't seen it go down.
It's always.
It always creeps up a little bit, so we were thinking at least what we received this year.
Okay.
And this one is back and forth a lot, property or payment in lieu of tax, other. I think we were leaving the same.
Sorry, I haven't analyzed that, yeah.
So we probably have a new total down there.
The new total's 8, 983,500. Sorry, I didn't see that completely properly. 8,983,500. Thank you. We've been seeing numbers a lot, so I'm just shorthanding it now.
Okay, and then the rest of them, we will just, so what we'll go through. So business licenses, we increased the fee for business license last year, but most of the business licenses are done in November. So we didn't really see that fee increase. So that's why we put it to 13 and I think that's where we want to leave it. Even though we didn't get that, what we budgeted 23 last year, I think we thought we were doubling the prices of everything, but it actually wasn't a double. So 9.6, 9.5 is probably more realistic number instead of the increase we kind of just calculated out. Close to 13. So we definitely leave that there, so that stays the same. Okay, here's the big one, fish tax. So you see, we got 922,230. We put it in at a million. I mean, that's what we put in when we did revenue. That was a past look. That was the average, even incorporating bad years. But obviously, it's not always the case. So I, I'm gonna save me one. Love it up, just to be conservative, but I, I mean.
I don't know what the 22 actual was, but we had been doing a three-year average?
Well, this time that we went back and we looked, we included the bad.
We went back to like 18, I think, when it's for 19.
I know, to, to get the 1 million or no?
Yes.
So this taxes, we received it from last year. Is that what, like 20, this 9.20 is from last year?
From fishing year 20, so this year will be fiscal year 25 will be this year's.
And do you guys have a projected lower number than a million or 900 or 20? 800?
I think Mr. Ellison and Mr. Bill have been, and Kevin Cathy have been through this. We never saw any, we saw 1.800.
Yeah.
And that was the lowest we saw.
And it didn't necessarily correlate to being immediately after a bad year.
And we've had this, we've tried to understand from the state how they figure this out and then it's like.
They are not very forthcoming. And I still think you should go with a three-year average. That's why we decided to do it. Even to succumb to a disaster, still do the three. Still do the three year average. That's what I feel like we've been doing. But I don't know, that's me, that's who does.
Yeah, I thought it, I think that was a good plan and because we are looking, you know, and if you guys went the whole way back to twenty eighteen, that's smart of you because you pulled in all those bad years. So at some point, twenty twenty five, the state's supposed to, or that whoever's supposed to pay up for the.
Oh, yeah.
So um, I'm comfortable with a million. That's your average. Three year average would be one point one four three. I'm comfortable.
That includes the odd year, so three year average?
I just did the past. I did.
Yeah, so that includes your odd years too. So this was a pretty bad year for as far as fishing goes and so I'm good with a million.
So did you do your average in three odd years or just three previous years?
Just the three previous years. Which I think was.
When they calculated a million, they went back to eighteen, right?
Yes.
Did you include odd years on that one too?
We just did every year.
Yeah, okay. So they went back to eighteen to get a million on all years, even add odd.
And straight three year would have been one point one. So you're under that. Giving a little.
So we're good?
And if we make a million, I'll buy pizza.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm good with that. It's probably smart to go back to twenty eighteen. Twenty twenty one, the price was really high and uh, twenty twenty was pretty really bad. Twenty eighteen was also really bad for the Gilmet and Seining. So this year Gilmeting was really good, Seining was really bad. Um, typically, more of the Gilmet fishery gets processed in town than the Seining fishery as far as market share, but um, I think it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be as bad as that eight hundred thousand year we had, I don't know, five or six years ago, I remember that. Um, I think a million, it might be a little over a million, so I think a million is good. I don't think it's going to be one point two, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's the boat of the fishermen.
Okay, so COVID no longer exists.
We're just not getting anybody.
Yes, Sam is kidding.
And Susan, this liquor licensure tax just seems all over the board.
Well, I don't know.
And we don't, we don't have it from this year yet.
Do they just give it once a year?
They do just give it once a year and I had an email in to them and have not heard back for.
I mean, it's all those approvals you guys do over the course of the year, which are mostly towards the end of a year or the very beginning of a year, it seems like. They they turn over on twelve thirty one, but some of the seasonal businesses that just have the beer and wine stuff, but they're only up like Baja.
Should be pretty close to the twenty three.
I would think, I mean, we haven't been losing.
Because we have a Boston E liquor license.
Right, except the state did just overhaul liquor statutes.
They did lower the fees.
I doubt they lowered. If anything, I, we should look to see if they raised it.
So do you want to leave it at ten or put it to ninety three?
I'd say leave it at ten.
Okay. Oh, here's, so we want, we do the cap one, the one we just found out about?
Yes.
Is that?
Community, what's CAP?
It's community assistance.
Oh, okay.
As they lost them. Yes. I lost track here. Oh. So we did just find out that in November, we're expecting one oh five, six fifty nine, which is the number in the twenty five budget. We don't have a way to tell what next year's going to be. Early on in the year, they send us something saying this is what we know it's going to be at least. And this year we got notified that it was going to be seventy five thousand and it's one oh five, so um. Yeah, in a few months, we'll know what it's at least going to be in twenty five, but not in time to do it. So it looks like we've just budgeted whatever we've got in the year prior.
Have we seen that number historically going down? Or is it all over the place?
Sounds like the state gives it, gives that little peek into it timely for people who do state fiscal year budgeting, but not for us.
Right. I'm saying if we're seeing a trend downward, then I'd say it's probably trending downward.
Is that subject to the legislature every year?
It is.
So yeah, I don't know until mayor, June, what it actually is.
Yeah. Well, there must be a part of it that's subject to the legislature because if they give us a at least seventy five.
But it's probably once in the governor's budget is my guess.
It is trending down.
But by thousands, right?
One thirty five in two thousand twenty two. Um, let me go back a little bit further here. And then one oh eight in twenty three. Twenty one. Was eighty seven, so actually there was a jump after twenty one.
I don't know.
Your guess is good as mine.
Pennies comparable, right? Yeah, did something freeze? Oh, shoot.
No, they're there. Okay, that was off, I was just seeing if there's a trend. I'm guessing probably some spikes with COVID money in twenty two would make sense. Okay.
So we got one oh five?
Yes.
We just budgeted what we had last year for forest receipts. As far as I know, it's funded federally.
That's the secure schools.
Yes.
Well, that was one through three, I guess.
And it tends to trend up, except for the roads part, which.
Tends to trend up?
Or the school part?
It has been. It started out at one point seven million or something like that.
Well, okay, I guess in the last few years.
But they hadn't given us anything before that. It was like ten thousand the year before that. All of a sudden, they sucked us into the whole forest thing. It was great.
Um, Cheryl, utility cooperative share tax.
I don't really have a good grasp on this, but I do see that it comes in through the state, but it's paid by CTC and CEC both. So them being cooperatives, it is some tax that they collect and then it gets passed through to us. I will get a better understanding for future.
And I'm guessing it's paid, we haven't received it yet. It's paid in November or something?
Yeah. We did miss that one. I'm thinking that we actually received it a couple of weeks ago and we just haven't gotten it in yet um, into our system. So I can update that one very soon.
Okay, so you have the, you have it?
Yeah.
But it tends to be staying kind of stable.
And why would you guys go down?
I think the total was around two ninety this year.
Oh, okay, you did, okay, you you probably did see.
I thought I had put in the year to date, sorry.
Yeah, it was two ninety seven in twenty three, so.
Okay.
It's like a percentage of sales for the telephone, I think, but it's a percentage of kilowatt hours sold, I think, for the electric. Oh, yeah, but theirs is considerably less. I feel like the lion's share of that.
That we received earlier in the year, so you can see there.
See, that's their question.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I thought maybe. So the telephones is the big one. Nobody threw away their phones this year, I promise you.
Cheryl, fish, fish, fish business tax is also a state tax that is, and Susan knows the whole.
It's for stuff that's outside of municipal or borough boundaries, but then it's shared back to the FMAs, fisheries management areas, based on their percentage of catch of different fish. Yeah, so if anything, it's going to be low.
Dutch Harbor and Kodiak get ninety percent of the money. Well, I mean, if we have an hour, I can tell you.
It's a small number.
But it's basically, it's it's outside of of Cordova, but it also includes the whole statewide, so depending on how statewide.
It's weird.
It's not even a set percentage of like Cordova gets this percentage or that number?
Well, no. It's our fishers management area.
They take the the fish tax, it's outside of any municipal boundaries, put it into a bucket and then and then they've got nine fish areas or whatever it is.
Whoever lobbies the most for it gets.
Whoever gets the biggest percentage of fish, of value of fish, gets that percentage of the bucket. Well, Dutch Harbor and Kodiak have all the pollock and crab and all of the high.
And when Prince William Sound, whatever amount we get, we split evenly with Whittier and Baldi's in Cordova.
So we.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
I have to hop off for a few minutes. I see some headlamps on the beach, so I'll be right back.
Okay, no worries, thank you.
So do we want to lower that considering the fishing year or it's across the state, so I guess.
I just leave it there, yeah.
Pension state relief.
The state does help us out with the pers and um, this is a pass through though. We also account for it. You see a um, a pers relief line item in every department as an expense, so it, yeah.
It's exactly in and out?
It it's, it should be, if it isn't.
That's a legislative thing too.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Lots of volatility there. I like people the same.
So that whole other governmental stayed the same, right?
Yeah, increased though from previous.
Um, we spent a fair amount of time on these today, took out some that are over, added some that'll be coming, feel pretty good about these numbers based on some facts with what we have rolling out, so unless anybody has any questions or anything, feel pretty good about those. I think the the police, the police pass through for um, Mount E Act is then credited or.
It shows up as an expense later on down in the budget. So it's a net zero.
And the other ones are increased based on recent actions of council to to do some lease options.
Yes, and every year there's a CPM. Every year we have a CPM? Yes, okay.
If it's a negative CPI, then leases stay as if we don't reduce the product.
So a big hit to law enforcement was the jail contract was reduced from three sixty to two twenty eight, seven forty three.
It's happened legislative as well.
State, we did how they calculate.
Yeah, their calculation and how they spread it amongst the different community jails within the state. Um, it was based on how much you show uh, for expenses on running your jail. Um, we came in at three percent on that as the whole pie and then um, usage and we came in at two percent there, so based on that uh, calculation, they, that's where we.
So we need more criminals?
Yeah, we need to house more criminals.
So we live in a safe place?
JK, JK.
I'm going to go outside and house more criminals or something like that. It might go up in consecutive years.
Maybe, I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, we need to spend some time looking at that jail contract and understanding it. I like, I don't know a lot about it at this point, um, but with Derek and Cheryl and Cheryl and I, we will spend some time and then we'll be I think it's evaluated every year.
Yes.
We will have some discussions. I mean, certainly that would be to understand.
We want to make sure we're capturing all the expenses that do go into running that jail, so we'll be looking at that pretty closely.
I like the optimism that we're going to be a safer community next year. I appreciate that.
The other big one in um LA is the airport. It's called the airline security service. I called the airport contract. We are on track to get to seventy five-ish. Um, we are waiting on some payments. Police department has submitted their hours. I submit their hours every month.
And how consistently are you seeing that money come in?
Um, it takes the state sometimes a a little bit more than a month, but it for state, I'd say it's consistent.
Okay, so we're still, should expect October and November and November and December?
I think.
And we might even be one month behind.
Uh, September, no, I I've added that in manually because we did have it hit the bank the other day.
So this is even slightly up with September or this reflects September?
This reflects September.
Okay.
If they can bill almost, it's just right at seven thousand a month. And so there's that. So that's law enforcement. Some of the big things in law enforcement, very proud of our little D and B. I'm done pretty good, even with the.
Even with the closure, wow.
Yeah.
Uh, going back up, what's our NBE MOU? I think it was.
It hasn't been in place for a little, it was a couple of years ago.
So we don't currently have an MOU with them?
No, no, we need to.
Yeah, I can take that off.
Or if they need to have an MOU with us?
It was.
It was for.
They were helping with the vehicles, if I remember correctly.
They bought us a police driver.
With his car, so that was highly attractive.
And then the um, police department will continue to be looking for dispatch opportunities.
And then Whittier is off the table, we're done, they want something to come. That's what I thought. I remember the conversation going.
And are you expecting the Forest Service of the state to pay this year for dispatch or?
We have the.
Yes.
It's all right, airline security is me, so.
This is showing up, that airline one. Have to show up to get it.
Show up. But I see those bits, so I know.
Nothing? Are you looking for?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you were looking, okay.
That's okay, they're not there yet, but. I do expect them. They do have different fiscal years, I know.
Yeah, which is. Probably just started. Yeah, okay. Um, so D and B, uh, we just, can you? Well, we, driving license and ID fees, I think that has to be a loss that because of the time away from D and B. I I suspect it'll be closer to what it was in twenty three.
Yeah, so are we lowering that one?
No, I think we'll be the same because it is also something that fluctuates depending on.
So we're leaving that at six thousand projections?
Yeah, thirty one thousand. So this, this other negative is when we register a vehicle here, we send everything to D and B? Yes, and then they.
They take a fee of it, um, and then they send us the rest back.
So for an order, it's supposed to be good to ship. So, yeah.
So it's forty two sixty eight minus forty two six six, is that the two numbers they?
Yes.
How they caught it, kept?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we did overall go up on that a little bit, kind of assuming that with time down, we'll be making that up and think it would be very positive for a D and B employee. Um, planning is up and down. That includes all building permits, conditionally, plus all that kind of stuff, so we just left it as is. I would. Yep, and we kind of looked at Bedarkie's entrance fees and how it had gone for the rest of the year and we do believe we'll hit ninety, so we left it. Cool. We will go over. Um, thirty, you know, we still have money to collect for the pool, we'll be closer to thirty seven, thirty eight, so we would put it, it's at thirty five, thirty seven five.
Sam, you know, I was just thinking, as we're working on the economic development property tax exemption stuff, I don't know where those fees will go. There's some fees involved. They may go in planning. So anyway, it's something we can think about.
Okay, we need to add it to the schedule too.
To the fee schedule also and then, yes.
Sam, back up in what direction are we facility or else what's that rental?
Well, you can rent Bedarkie for the.
For the pool.
Is that, or is that?
RDS or?
So that's just like the upstairs. So that's just like the upstairs area.
Well, I guess a good job on the pool, considering they are closed for about two months, so.
For sure.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that. Um, so, sale equipment and property is in cemetery lots, you ever know, you don't really want to.
Increase that.
Fix that number. We never, we don't have any large equipment that would. So allocated administrative costs come from the enterprise funds to support what is done from general fund workers and, use supplies or things they need from us. Uh, it is based on a percentage, I think we haven't got the general, or the, sorry, the enterprise funds to point where we're already, to know what that is. Um, so we put six fifteen in. We don't have a toll for this year.
Right.
That's what we got.
Um, and that's internal um, entries that need to be made still and, yeah, it's part of the catch-up list.
So we left it at six fifteen. Um, we will probably, when the enterprise funds, which we'll be turning around and working on tomorrow, uh, we'll, we'll have a better idea what that looks like.
Okay.
No more, our loans. So investment earnings are FNBA and ANLIP. This does not include the permanent fund. Okay, so I, and I'll say that we just earned twenty-four thousand dollars in a month in the annual account. We're still holding that five million dollars that we, got back from Merad in order to, uh, well, we're holding it because we're not done yet.
Right.
So, so that, and that's just one month. I think the month of court wasn't quite that much.
Right.
So that's been good. I imagine that we'll see this go, the sixty-six go well into the seventies.
What did you say? We just collected on, in one month, twenty-something?
Twenty-four. But we might pull, we might have to pay.
Right, so it's not gonna be there for next year.
Yeah, um, and we are still waiting on debt reimbursement. That will be more than this one oh four. We just are not, we don't know what that is because it changes every year. So it will be in the range of eight hundred-ish.
Uh, I, yeah, I'm expecting that we'll get in the range of eight hundred more than what we already have in there. So the one oh four was our reimbursement from our interest payment earlier in the year, and then we just made our principal plus another interest payment in October, so in November, I'm expecting it will be around eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Can we go back um, to miscellaneous revenue?
We can.
Well, okay.
No, we can, isn't it? Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, I was just, what is it? What, what is all that?
Oh. That's the one that we found late this afternoon and there is um, there's some cleanup to be done in that account. It's not, yeah.
That's why it's miscellaneous.
Yes, and it's been used.
As miscellaneous.
The catch-all.
Yeah, okay.
So we, we, that's why we put it down to fifty. We went through there and tried to figure out, and we know that new things have to be moved.
Yeah.
And figure out things that may.
It should go somewhere else.
Should be somewhere else, right, yeah.
And then what should be there.
Okay, great.
So we feel good with that number.
What type of things are supposed to go into miscellaneous revenue?
Um, we.
We'd have.
That expected cash flow.
What was, so we got um, some.
But not donations.
Oh, yeah, special.
Um, let me just glance in here real quick because now I can't see. Yeah, I have a list of things that should be moved.
And do they increase anything else enough to then maybe edit this again?
I did look at that, a lot of its enterprise funds, um, and then a lot of its one-offs, I'll call it, um, what was the thirty thousand dollar?
Insurance.
Oh, yeah, when we stopped our self-funded insurance, um, we received thirty thousand when it was all said and done and um, that went in there. That is probably an appropriate place for it to go because we wouldn't have another account. Um. Sorry, I forgot. I should have written that this down.
That's all right, but that number will probably change as we move forward. And for the Cordova Center, I see they're really close to hitting their mark. Is that through the third quarter? That we still have more efficient, a couple other readings coming out?
I think even our most recent stuff, maybe we're waiting on payments from.
Okay.
Um, yes, but yes, yeah.
But they exceeded their twenty twenty-four budget, which is great.
Yes.
Yeah, it's done.
We put it up to fifty.
Fifty, good.
I think that's appropriate. That was our goal.
Yeah, and we have, um, yes, we have meetings, but already weddings, meetings, all kinds of things around, so.
I'll get back to you on that. That's a better version though.
Could you get back on that investment earnings? I, I didn't quite understand what you said that's derived from.
That is ANLIP, which is the account that we have that has a um, higher uh, interest rate and FNBA, but it does not include the permanent fund. So that is a separate.
It's a separate bank.
It's a separate fund too, so it wouldn't be in general fund revenue.
What do we have in AMLIP now besides that?
Five million?
Yeah.
We have one point.
Because you took some money out of that one point ten, right?
Yeah, we've been, we've been putting it back in as trying to make as much money as we can to help get us through the year, so, so we will be transferring again after this.
Big chunk of revenue from sales tax and property tax.
Um, I think it's one point six on top of five. It's one six or one two, I think.
Okay. And does that mean we're transferring the five million out because the harbor's gonna be done? They need to.
That means we're holding the five, the, the last reimbursement that we got from Merad. We still owe turning in. We're holding that. Until we are in that place and then they, we also um, have to make, we have to show our match, the city's match, to the, I can't remember what, what it's called now, but basically just showing that we put in twenty percent of, we, five percent of the twenty percent. So we have to document that, then go back and do that. So Colin is working on that now. We're waiting for them to approve that. Once we pay that, then we're pretty much, we have some reports to do for Merad, and then we have just a flat four twenty-five or something left in Merad to get back. And then we're done with Merad for the harbor, but we still have, we'll work with turning in before we get that payment, but then we also then go to the million dollars in, also Merad, but a different account because it was given after and we did not increase the cost of the harbor. So we have to, to show where we spent a million dollars, which will not be a problem, other than just the paperwork and the time it took to get done. Okay, I think that grabs some of the big revenues.
So what's the total bottom number now?
Thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four twenty-eight.
What's that each one?
Thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay, so we can either, so now I guess we have two choices. We can just talk about some of the ideas that I can wrap in the memo. We can go to expenses, um, and you can ask question, you know, I don't know how, what.
Well, let's look at your menu, memo first. And then we'll go to the.
Okay, so we have the pie chart. I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
I like noodles.
I have a good one.
Sorry, I put it at the end. So your memo's just on page one and two and three.
Do you want this one?
Okay, so we talked about the fish tax, talked about sales tax, talked about property, or property tax. Um, so there is that question. Okay, so I just want to keep this straight. So we have a cash flow issue that happened from the three point nine million dollars that came from the harbor. Unrelated, this is not, that is not a budget discussion. Like, it's not, we budget revenue to meet what we want to do in that fiscal year. Okay, so just want to make sure we're all good on that. Then we do have this million dollar coming from the legislative appropriation that we, Colin, Lynn, and God, that is for reimbursing harbor expenses that were not covered in the other grant. We, we have discussed and I will come forward after budget's over with an ordinance to be able to recoup that to, what, three point nine by being allowed to draw from the permanent fund as cash flow is needed. Instead of doing three point nine million out of the permanent fund and dumping it into the regular account, we're gonna leave it, I mean, this, I shouldn't say we are, this is my idea. We're gonna let it stay in the permanent fund and this is what Blake, that was the best way to handle it, he's our advisor. Um, leave it in there, let it earn money. The bigger the amount, the more it earns, obviously, and he can do, you know, draws, for lack of a better word, up to five hundred thousand without having to really settle off and do a bunch of things that would really hit the balance. So, um, that will be coming after budget and that's a way to help with that cash flow issue. In the meantime, we're gonna be putting money in the AMLIP, trying to get as much interest as we can get and then being conservative. But we could put the one million dollar into the budget. I, I'm just throwing out ideas to try to help the issue and, um, so that's one thing, and then reduce, right, the three point nine to two point nine. So that's one thought process. We do have the three million dollars to repay, um, the permanent fund. But we are waiting because of the state reimbursement for the final pushes over that hedge for us.
Does that three million in AMLIP getting high interest?
So. So we have the three million dollars that was flat out from the general fund given to the harbor, right?
Three nine.
Three nine.
Point nine.
And then we have the three hundred that we pulled from the permanent fund.
The three million.
I mean, three million that we pulled from the permanent fund, so.
Yes, which was a loan, and that will be repaid.
So why, so doesn't it make sense then, as we get money in from Merad and all that, to put that money into the general fund? And then as the harbor repays that three point nine, because isn't that being repaid from the harbor? Are we getting repaid on that three point nine from the harbor?
No, three point nine was a gift.
It was the close, it was the gap between what the funds had been raised to what the contract price, price was. A million dollars was collected, or not collected, uh, awarded after that.
Tony, you owes three point nine.
Tony.
Oh, there he is. Yeah, uh-huh, uh-huh.
There it is now.
Three point nine you owes.
Well, potentially two point nine, yeah.
The million should cover, should cover a million of that, because that was, when we, when we voted on three point nine, it was, it was with the.
Any additional funds.
Semi-intention that we'll be able to get more.
And we, we also.
And get the million more.
And we do get some from Denali, which covered city induced change orders, which increase some number of loads, um, and uh, a couple other things. So we did, we did get some money. I wish we could have got three point nine million.
So really, it's about two point nine that we need to figure out how to reimburse the general fund with, and if that's a gift from permanent fund, if that's a loan to the harbor. I mean, we could do it however we want to do it. We just have to decide how to do it. That's what she's saying. She's, she's coming with an ordinance.
So that's.
Take it out of the permanent fund, but that's a separate issue.
Unless, I mean, but if we put this million, and I don't know when this million is coming, I'm hoping, I mean, Colin's.
It could come by time or.
You know, but it's Merad. We have to go through a process. We all know how painful that is.
And you have to complete our current process before you can start that.
Yes, and we've been working on.
Next year some.
Yeah, yeah, it will come in twenty-five. It's just unknown one, so, um.
So I, I, I know you have one million and that's like a question mark. Couldn't that be into the budget? And to me, what seems like the intent of the three point nine is that one million should go back towards.
I don't think it should go into the budget. I think it should go into the general fund.
Correct.
I don't think it should be another, another million dollars to our total revenue.
Right, right.
But just to put it back into the.
Should go into the general fund.
And then repay the two point nine. Okay, so then that's not a revenue discussion.
Yeah.
Either.
Okay, we're all.
Except I wonder how we account for that going into the general fund to just stay there. It would be okay if we pass a budget for twenty-five that has basically an extra million in revenue than expense and then call it.
Repays the general fund for what we.
And then call it transferred to general fund reserve at the bottom line.
But not used to balance.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think there's already the lines.
I think, Mike, is that what that, I, we were gonna do a little more.
Pleasure.
Okay, so we'll work on that. Okay, so as a, just some information to you on some of the increases, a finance director ran an eight months, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. There is a part-time info tech position, uh, which replaces the IT director and has um, computer replacement funds. Fifteen for computer replacements, I think?
Yes.
So the actual position is seventy-six. Colin is not budgeted in twenty-five. I just wanted to point out, because I, when I was public works, this kind of drove me a little bit crazy, was that the public work street maintenance budget has a line item for the electricity for street lighting. So in reality, that's nothing that the street department uses, you know, it's not really their expense. It's, it's an overall expense, and we talked about moving into the department now, we talked about moving into utility facility. It's, it's a, it's a strange thing.
Why, why isn't it in utilities, facilities?
Facility utility, I, I, because it's always been there.
Okay, but I, I mean, is there something that we would need to move?
Well, it's not a facility.
Yeah, it's not facilities either.
Yeah.
It's not a building.
Yeah, so it's kind of a weird thing, but I think that really is the best fit.
Yeah, right, as long as you're talking that out and showing what it's for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you would put the street lighting, electricity for street lighting.
Yeah.
But I did want to point out that that eight fourteen includes that sixty-five thousand. Um, whoa, insurance, that was the other thing. Oh, we got a lot of.
Oh, no, did you get real numbers?
We did.
And they're in.
They're in.
Oh.
Insurance, we had budgeted at twenty percent higher than it was last year. The actual increase is thirty-five percent. So we added an additional fifteen percent, which was a total.
Sorry, I'm getting a little spotty in the room. I'll look in my.
It's well over a hundred.
And it's already in every department for employees?
It's updated.
It's updated, which is another reason why you didn't gain.
Extra hundred and sixty-one thousand from what you saw in the packet.
Yes, so that doesn't, that's not the whole thirty-five percent. That's only fifteen.
That was only twenty percent. Oh, yeah, that was just the additional. That was only 20%. Oh, yeah, that was just the additional 15%. We had already raised it 20% in anticipation of it going up, just didn't realize it was gonna go up that far. And they did negotiate it.
Yeah, they negotiated it down from 38%.
So we did rough bids again.
We did.
We did.
A lot of insurances would not touch us. Motto came in with a...
Uh, yeah, 30.
At 39% increase from what ours currently was.
Yeah, we have some ideas if you're gonna, I guess, on the list for next year, talk about some...
Yeah, we can enter into a rerate like around April, if our, if we believe our cases have gone down, which we do believe they will, or there's potential that they will.
Yeah, maybe insurers, we can add here. So that was a big hit.
And so that's what we owe for this year, or is that what our increases are going to pop up?
Okay, it's up 35% from '24.
And it's in here at 35? Oh, it is not.
It's in there actually. It's in my, at 35,000.
I, I, so I guess the other ideas that I had in, is the grant matches, the ambulance. So the fire staff has, is completing a grant for an ambulance, a brand new ambulance, and the match is only 15,000. And that, they have their own ambulance fund, so that isn't a negative to, like, the sweep account, because it comes out of their fund. So the remaining 309 are white shed and, oh, Second Street, and those are on... They're on Second Page.
Did Grant Buns not get put in the packet?
Where?
We were second tab on the question.
Oh, I might not have seen a second tab, sorry.
We have it, so show it to us.
Do you want me to go print it?
I can tell you real briefly, um, what they were. We have a, our grant, our shares are for the MPG grant, which is our...
Emergency.
Emergency management, um, is 18,000. The SHSP, I don't recall what it stands for, but it is another emergency management, uh, EM, S services. It's 1,250. The ambulance grant that Sam just mentioned is 15,000. White shed road matching grant in '25, we are looking at 214, just under 215. Um, and the Second Street grant match for '25 is 75,150.
So that is the last white shed match. Not the last Second Street match. Uh, we have, we're reaching out for, uh, that's utilities, so the last two for white, uh, sorry, Second Street are utilities in construction.
And that's the one at Long Point?
1.5 or is it 2.5? 2.6, yes, thank you.
So our total grant match is for '25, there are 324,000. That includes the ambulance, so we could...
Does 309,148 just get everybody else?
Yep.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess my suggestion to that is it gets paid out of the permanent fund. These are capital projects, we sign up for them, we have been taking them out of the general fund until now. So the 309, 309,148, um, is thrown on the table. So the projects, um, the thing I, I'm, I guess I would like to have the discussion about capital projects. We tend to say we're gonna do it, and then it never happens after the budget. And I mean, I think the reality right now is we don't have a budget to, I mean, we don't have a general fund to really do these capital projects. I mean, maybe that's what some of that many dollars could be used for, was upon some capital projects. Um, so I did pull some of the projects that were in the budgets out, but on the side of fairness, I didn't also extend that offer out to streets or all departments. I only took what was already budgeted. So, I feel pretty strongly about the, moving the fire alarm panel is a fire life site, safety thing. It needs to happen. I feel like those are things that you really can't continue to push away, and it's been pushed down the road for a while. I think the other ones, we could talk about doing a capitals project, and I know I'll bring it forward, but, you know, funding is light, so it's...
But, no, I mean, number two on your list, as property owner, do we have, what we're talking about? Do we have, we have an option in that? I mean, we kind of have an option, not really?
What, I don't know what number two.
Uh, you have, you have other items, you said one was the fire alarm, number two is the rubble survey.
No, we don't have an option on that.
Okay, I didn't think so. When you skipped over that, like, that, that seems pretty good.
That one came in late, and I'm sorry to fall on my, yes, yes, we do need that one.
Yes, three and four, I can, I guess, see what you're saying, or... Yeah, they, they seem like capital projects, I mean, it seems like a reasonable thing to have a permanent fund, but I would support that.
But I do think that if we are gonna fund capital projects out of permanent fund, we should, I'm sorry, we should have a fair, um, streets or a center. One of these other places should have a shot, and this, Malton facilities. So, in fairness, I guess, we want to consider taking those out of permanent funds, we should.
So a couple of years ago, we had a capital projects list.
Yeah.
Can we resurrect that, or a new version of it?
Oh, yeah, we can bring you a capital project to us, I think.
I know we wanted to try and knock some of those out as we could.
We did knock some of them out with the...
Harbor money?
Yes, thank you. And so those have, you know, we're, we're getting a truck with some money from the permanent fund, so, uh, I don't know, we've done a lot, actually, with that, but...
We usually try to get it so it's in time for the state legislation, so they can...
Well, there's two capital projects list, really.
Right.
There's this, the one that we come up with with, like, replacing a pole pump, that doesn't go to state legislation. But maybe, like, the bear fence went to the state federal, actually. We're kind of running that gamut down so far, holding water. Um, and then, and then there's these more local ones, like a pump, you know, HVAC, we fix the HVAC, we're gonna reduce our electricity, you know, the street crew, I know they need a backup, you know, our workers are old, and those are big, big items, you know, but...
It would be nice to see that, I mean, I know we're fighting a deficit right now, but it's still nice to see that, keep it on our radar so that we can help, um, get some of those things.
And of course, like any list, capital projects or whatever, they need to be prioritized. Safety is number one, so things that you do have listed here seem like number eins.
Except that if you pull these things out of the budget for general fund, you kind of need a little bit of a commitment from seven to vote yes to move it from the permanent fund. So that's hard to give at a budget work session, but it's something you need to think about.
Thank you.
I, I think council needs to decide, if, if you're just gonna throw all of the capital stuff into, into the permanent fund, you need to decide, I think, how much money you're going to allocate, whether that's based on interest earned last year or a percentage of the permanent fund, or whatever that is, what that amount is, and then rank your projects, what's gonna get that money. Because I can tell you, as a mayor, I will not vote yes to a blanket, all of this stuff is, is... But, you know, I don't get that vote unless another council member joins in there, but, uh, but we, we can't just...
Oh, yeah.
I think we got 8 million dollars out there, and we can just spend it, spend it.
Yeah, it wasn't gonna be a blank check, permanent fund ordinance, it was gonna be with a specific list.
So can we, just for the sake of moving forward, I guess, can we agree that the fire alarm and the property owner is a must? We, we have to figure that out, we have to, it's in the budget right now. The 10,000 dollars is in planning, the fire alarm is in valence, so that is already in, all of these are actually in the budget.
I thought you said four was not.
Is four? Correct, sorry, four is not, three is...
One, two, three are.
I would say put four in the budget, two.
There's a...
I would certainly say that life and safety things I would support, taken from the permanent fund. And any big matches to streets, you know, something that's gonna, you know, a million dollars is gonna get us 15. I would, that's what the permanent fund is for, to, to do those kind of things. But, you know, whether it's for 7,000 or 10,000 for cameras for the jail, I don't know that I would support that from the permanent fund.
And I, and I speak, but I'm with, I'm with you, Mayor, on your last few statements on the permanent fund. And I would remind everybody, we just took basically now 2.9 million dollars for a capital project, which was the harbor. That was a big hit to that permanent fund, and we need to start regrouping that too, before we start spending millions more.
So 3 million, well, we took 3 million out of the permanent fund.
And that's the one.
And that will be repaid. We have not taken 2.9 out of the general fund, I mean, sorry, the...
He's talking to 3.9 minus the one million, which leaves you with 2.9 maybe.
But that's general fund, that's not permanent.
Came out of the general fund.
Yes, he said, he's remembering it.
Oh, well, well, you're, you just said you're going to ask us to have an ordinance to take money out of the permanent fund. I don't know how much that is, it's going to have to recoup the general fund, so, in a sense, it's a...
Yeah, you took, you took, you spent 2.9 million that could have been spent on some of these other capital projects. Now, because that's spent, we gotta go back into our permanent fund. So it's, it's systematic of where it came from, but that's, that's what I'm saying. We just spent almost 3 million dollars of taxpayers' money on that harbor. Not that that wasn't a, a good value, but keep that in mind when we start talking about spending millions more.
Okay, Derek, so how would you like to move forward? Do you want to leave the fire alarm, the property, I mean, the cameras or, everything's in the, everything except number four is in the budget right now?
I would like to leave them all in the budget.
Okay, but, so, and I, I don't really want to...
They're in the general fund budget, what we're hoping to do is pull them out of the general fund budget, so that we can get it to balance better, and then commit to saying we'll put them in out of permanent fund later.
Okay, but, um...
Leave it all in the budget for now, add number four, but...
Okay, leave it in, okay.
And we get to the end, we can decide how much we want to...
Okay, sorry.
As I asked, and we'll go back to the mill, right? Look at those kind of things.
Okay, got it, got it.
And we have to be expenditures, yeah, so...
HVAC is pool, the 25.
So just add 25 into a pool line item, and then it'll be right.
Okay.
Okay, so the last thing on there is the ski hills budget, I did reduce their maintenance budget from 25 to 10, uh, previous to a few years ago. Oh, so Mr. Reddian's staff will be here at the November 20 meeting, they had commitments tonight. They're interviewing for the new maintenance person, Mr. Ranch, I'm retired. Maybe you'll have a report for that.
You tried to get them to come till the November 6th, then they couldn't.
No, because they're interviewing.
Yes, so they, they will be here for the November 6th meeting.
But they'll be here on the 20th.
So I just put in the code language, I also sent you guys the contract for the ski hill. I, we have, I mean, their maintenance budget has gone up from about 3,500 a long time ago. You know, and in the last two or three years, it's been 25, 20, 20, and then has to 25 again. So I just, we're not required to pay that for the contract. And, so I reduced it, you recall? And then their insurance is a request, it is not required, it is not in that list of things that we pay. And, um, the other thing that is not, I will say this, in my opinion, not a part of the requirement, is when they added the snow making machines, they put a new water line in there, which they paid for. They, we made it, uh, originally the agreement had been that they would pay for snow and water. They came back to council at some point, and they said, no, we won't pay for it. I would ju, would like not to pay for that. So, but now, these are your decisions, not mine, I, I like, you know...
We'll be good that day, breaking on here to show us what their references are, and, you know, ask them a few questions.
So would you want to leave the budget as it is then, 1,000?
Yes, I would leave it as it is, because they are supposed to approach us before budget time, and we don't know if they have any big projects scheduled, so, yeah.
He, he gave you a budget, he didn't say anything about...
Yeah, but they're supposed to give us an end of the year report in April, and we didn't get that. And that would have been nice to have, we're to hear if they have any big projects planned, and we don't know that.
And our timeline was almost to have our last budget work session on November 20th, and be ready for approval by December.
That was part of the deal, and we made that contract last one. Because it's really important for us to know how a ski hill is doing at the end of the season each year, and if they have any big projects coming up, like cable replacements, so...
Painting the tower, did it?
Painting the towers, yep, so, that's why we agreed to do that.
Okey dokey. So, I mean, how would you like to talk about, um...
One department at a time.
Council's up first.
They're always up first.
Back on page seven.
All right, Susan?
Yeah, I know, except where are my notes? I forgot why I put those up.
Um, operating supplies went up because the Zoom, um, subscription is 1920 a year, and then the video editor is 150 a year.
Okay.
Both of those, at least the video editor, they're coming in.
Non-departmental, oh, city manager?
Both of them, yeah.
Contingency kept the same, travel, maybe should be increased, but kept the same, because the election in '25 is mayor and three council members. So there could be new council members who, I mean, but, of course, I open it to all and any of you to attend any year, the AML conference. But I left that at 1,500, because we do have a lot of miles that we're trying to use also for travel that isn't fully funded by budgeting. Dues and subscriptions is how we pay to codify, no, is that? No, dues and subscriptions is our AML membership each year, and it's based on population, and, I guess, just seems like... Oh, and that, no, MuniCode's in mine, I think. But anyway, that's what it is, and they're kind of real numbers, I don't know if contingency, you know... I can't see you doing much with any of those. And the next one is mine, which of course is top-heavy on the salaries and all the stuff that I can't really touch. Um, starting at operating supplies.
Do you have...
What do I put in operating?
I guess, what are the, what's the 10th employees, and I just see that as a...
Election.
Election, that's what it is.
Do my elections come from that? They come from my election line item, actually.
Okay.
But I'm gonna use it for this year. And then even into next year. Tina did not move out of town, thankfully, and is willing to come in at key times of the year when new big procedures happen, you know, for the deputy clerk. It's hard to try and teach her. Everything this month, when, if you have the ability, come in when we're doing assessment notices, come in when we're doing appeals, you know, board of equalization, all the things, foreclosures, tax bills. So. I would like to keep it at that. I am going to send Colette to the clerks conference at AML this year. And then hopefully, um, every deputy should go to professional development, which is for our region of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It's in Washington. I got sent, Tina got sent, and I would like to send her to that, which is a week-long thing in Tacoma in the summer. I think that includes professional development also. Dues and subscriptions is a real number for both of us to be AAMC and IAMC. Um, professional services will come in. That is, um, muni code when we codify things. And we have some big ordinances that are ready to go to muni code, and they charge by the page. So those, we might hit that ten, 'cause I just gave them a bunch of ordinances less week. And then we've got other big ones coming, so those will go into next year. Anytime we do a title or whatever of big changes, that costs money. Assessing our real numbers, those fees and software are real numbers. We signed a three-year contract three years ago, so this is the last year of those numbers. Those might go up in twenty six. Elections have been pretty steady, under two thousand. I think I might put in the fee schedule to raise their rates to pay them. I still, I still think we'll stay under the two. And that's it. Public relations, if kids come in asking for donations, sometimes I do out of that. That's it. And I kept the mayor's the same, even though it looks like he's spent nothing. I start using his after council's run down.
Need to buy more pizza, huh?
Yeah.
Are you doing AML?
No, it's the same. I wasn't going to, but it's the same time as board of vision, so I'll be here for the board of vision.
So. What you got, say, on me? What were your budget?
Well, Collins is not in there.
Okay.
Um, so that was substantial. The I, no, the IT guy has, um, so that's me, Emily, and Andy. Same positions are in there. Um, and the random, you know, operators to have his professional development is spread amongst the three of us.
Did we put communications all somewhere else? Is that what's going on there?
All in, is now all.
Non-departmental.
Non-departmental. It was just so much work to sort of.
So then, I guess I have five hundred in my clerk one, I don't know.
You had added that, you said for the Cordova Times that you had specific things?
Oh, yes, yes. I didn't know where to put it. That's what I did. Uh, we have to pay separate from our contract when we get them to do affidavits, which are required for the foreclosures.
Yep.
And, I mean, can we, do you guys really wanna just walk through every line for every department? Or do you have some questions on your sheets?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have to do that, I guess.
Yeah, but, um, so we can buzz through. I'm looking at the bottom number, and then I, if I see a thing I have a big question about, that's when I'm, so we can go a little faster.
Yeah, 'cause I was like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, finance would be next also, so that includes eight months of a new finance director.
Okay.
At one twenty-six with family insurance, I guess, so.
Yeah, that would go up just a little bit because of the insurance. That number's not in there yet.
As would mine and the manager's.
Everybody's insurance is gonna go up next time you see it, but the overall increase to insurance for the general fund was that number that we said at the beginning.
One sixty-seven.
Yep, one sixty-one.
And then in finance, what's the repairing maintenance, the thirty thousand, uh, computers or?
Why do I not have it?
You don't have no.
Note.
Sorry.
Note?
You pick all the good ones, huh?
Zero up until.
Yeah.
I have done this before.
Had to be something you were thinking of.
Oh, my goodness.
Thirty, though. Is it the server or something with Casell? Or, no, that would be IT-ish.
It, yeah, non-departmental has the county and, um, software.
Look in an email. Did you must've emailed it to someone?
It'll come back up there.
Put a note on it, answer it next to it.
If it's a duplicate, get rid of it.
We can move on.
Good one.
Quick, nice number though.
Does anybody else, nobody else for finance?
No, that makes sense for the salary person.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just wanna let you know that I'm back.
Okay, thank you, Ken. We're just going through the expenses. Now we're on finance. I guess we're just about done with finance.
So, yeah, page ten is, uh, planning, that's where we're moving towards. So this is, uh, budgeted with a new employee at, I think, wages.
New employee for the full twelve months?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the insurance that's caused the increase.
And then, yeah, that's a little.
You got me lost there. You said page ten you're on?
Yep, yeah, planning.
Planning in the expense side.
That's in the original packet.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thank you, commission. Good, uh.
So, so, hang on, just a minute on the salaries. The planning is, they just have one?
Yes.
Employee, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And health insurance is fifty grand on, for one person?
Yes.
For one family?
Let me, I can give you a fresh air number.
Need to go back to the marketplace individually, give them a statement, and let them get their own. Fifty grand, you had pretty darn good health insurance.
And that's only the twenty percent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it depends on if it says a single person, or married, or family.
You have it budgeted for a family.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And a family now, uh, is, the total premium is fifty one thousand, six hundred and twenty for the year. The city picks up between forty six thousand and forty nine thousand of it, depending on classification of employee.
Hey, quick, uh, comment there on planning commission. I don't know what the planning commission makeup is currently, if we've got a lot of uh, veterans on there, so to speak, but if we've got some new people, I would sure encourage at least one of those people to go to the AML conference. Uh, it doesn't look like they've got funding there, but maybe they're, maybe they're good with what they've got, got enough experience. But if they don't, I think it's worthwhile at least getting one person up there, especially with a new planner coming in.
Okay, add that to the wish list.
Yep. Um, and then go through DMV, and I think Derek is here as well. But there's not a lot of stuff that we get to.
And that's, excuse me, uh, one part-time person or one full-time?
It's a, a half-time.
Half-time?
Right.
Okay. A little bit over half-time, but yes.
Oh, their insurance matching their salary.
Yes.
That's okay.
Okay, all right.
A lot of this, we just don't have a lot of.
Right.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay.
Did I miss something? Can we work to?
Ten, we're on eleven.
Eleven, and when we look at law enforcement, for personnel costs anyway, it's helpful to look at that combined with jail because all of our employees are split. The officers and.
Dispatch.
Well, officers are all eighty-twenty, so eighty percent law enforcement, twenty percent jail, and the dispatch is seventy-third.
Okay, thank you.
And what are we budgeting in the law enforcement for? Combined for the chief, not the officers?
The chief, a sergeant, four officers, and then a community, or communications clerk leader, and four communication clerks. And an admin specialist, all of which are full-time.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Um, ten employees and on-call.
I was just wondering if that was a.
That's a good error.
That's a good error. We can delete thirty thousand, four hundred. My apologies. That's my next question.
Oh, nice. Woo-hoo.
Easter egg.
Yeah.
You won. Any, I mean, Derek is here, if you have any questions.
It was under law enforcement.
Employees, law enforcement. I, I, I would like to know where we're at on another law enforcement officer. Do you have any updates on that?
Well, we've had, uh.
You have to talk into my mic, Derek can't hear you on the phone. And then you have.
I know we, we increased the budget for that last year. Hope you can hear some good news.
Well, we've had.
Some news.
We've had probably four or five applicants, but none of them have been, none of them have been what we want.
Okay.
They've all come with a lot of baggage that I'd rather not take on for the city.
Sure.
So we're still looking for a fifth officer.
I mean, you don't have anyone in the background checking process, or?
We have one.
Okay.
We have one that we're doing a background check on right now, and we'll see how he pans out.
Okay. So right now, you're saying you've got you, the sergeant, and then three officers, right?
Yes.
And you're looking for that four?
And we're looking for the, yeah. And we're sending in four dispatchers right now, and we're hoping to get a DMV clerk hired soon.
Yeah, the four dispatch and the supervisor, do you have, or is that?
Right now, we have a supervisor and three dispatchers.
Okay.
One on legal, that's right.
Yes.
But we're budgeting for four.
Or a dispatcher.
Yes, we still have a fourth one.
Yes.
It's out on medical.
Yeah.
So we have four. This one is out.
Right.
Okay.
We're operating right now, a little shorthanded.
Now, thank, thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Looking forward to future good days.
Yeah, hopefully.
Any other questions on these here?
Um, I was just gonna ask the last line. Uh, ammunition was close to ninety thousand this year, and you guys just budgeted five thousand.
For which one?
For ammunition, five five oh two oh.
Yes.
Okay. You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
We spent that much money because we have, I think there were three training classes.
Okay.
And we bought the ammo, we got reimbursed for part of it.
Okay.
Um, the three classes were actually canceled, so we're hoping to pick those classes back up this year. But, yeah, five thousand is good for us.
Okay.
And then what is our equipment rental?
It's the new car, trucks.
Okay, perfect.
The payments for the new trucks.
Yep.
There's also one in parking room.
Yes, and it's, okay. Seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Anything else on the?
Law enforcement or jail?
I guess just from a revenue standpoint, are we still actively trying to pick up dispatch for other communities, or is that a dead end?
Right now, we are not. That, that's not been brought to my attention since I've been here.
Can they go up to RFP on a schedule? I mean, like the one that Whittier just signed with somebody else. It, I think it comes back up either next year or the year after.
Okay.
Um, potentially, I don't know. It's mandatory that they're going back out to RFP, but.
Could be.
Nothing. Do you think we're gonna be able to get the, all of that seventy-five thousand to the airport?
It, it's gonna be really close. We only had a few months. We pulled all the invoices for the last, or for the whole year. I think we only had maybe three months where we weren't close to the top.
Okay.
And those were these months that we were just too busy answering calls and couldn't get out there, but, uh, yeah, we're gonna be really close to that.
Thanks for making that a priority.
It's, yeah, that, that's definitely a priority.
Good. Anything else? Questions for?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire EMS.
And what is this for staff? Can we run through that?
Yes, so this is, um.
What's that?
Marshall, Marshall, yep, and two.
Oh, yeah, Marshall and two.
So three FD?
Yes.
Yes, and where?
We don't have, do we have three right now?
We are, we have an offer extended for the third position, yes. Um, is this included with the part-time?
Is that the tenth employee?
Oh, that's right, it's ten, but it's not a part-time.
Which is seasonal, is that right? Or we just have a part-time?
They've used it as seasonal in the past, but it's also been used spread out, so, yeah, they get to kinda determine what the needs are on that.
But that one doesn't get health insurance?
Correct.
And just currently make it?
Yes. What's the volunteer part of the line?
Okay, so that is the, um, when Robbie came last year and asked for EMS on call, that includes that, his estimate was ninety-five, I think.
I think ninety.
Ninety, and, um.
Isn't that volunteer incentives? What's volunteer, then what's volunteer incentives?
That is.
That's their every two-year payment they get if you're on the fire.
We're gonna let Justin, yeah, he can get that. You're gonna get the new guy over here.
Hello.
Hello, that's Justin. This is Justin.
Nice to meet everyone. Um, sorry, say it again. We were talking about line.
Volunteer.
Volunteer or fireman line and the incentives line under that.
Um, volunteer, fireman, my understanding was, that was the account we were using for the volunteers on-call pay. The line we were using for the volunteers on-call pay. Um.
Now, does that include the ambulance? Is that straight across the board for, 'cause now, 'cause we do ambulance and firefighter, right? Or do we just do ambulance?
We're just paying EMS on-call. If they happen to be a firefighter as well, that's just a coincidence.
Okay. That line also included the twenty-six five that was the fire department's portion that they got annually prior to Robbie coming in and asking for that.
prior to Robbie coming in and asking for that five dollar an hour on-call pay.
So they're billing us for the on-call, for the ambulance, so I know it was an estimate when it came in.
Okay.
And are we still outstanding on payments, or is this, I guess how, were we paying out quarterly? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
So have we paid out Q three already?
Okay, we've gotten, um, an invoice from them for quarter one and quarter two, and we paid both those. So I, I believe we'll, we'll have third quarter short payments.
Okay. And Q four will be in next year.
Right, starting next year.
And what is the incentive?
And then incentives. Um, that one, I'm still admittedly slightly not the most clear on. Um. I thought that was what we were doing, um. Before the on-call pay, we're, we are still doing this. Uh, every volunteer member gets fifteen dollars per training session and call-out. Um, I believe that's what the incentives line was.
There isn't any, you use that for the annual pay.
Oh, right, right, right. Apologies. Uh, that was basically our ceremony stuff for like banquet. And whatnot, yeah. Can I change the name of that?
I can add a little line there.
So the one-ten is all of the.
It includes both.
Both EMS and fire. EMS is on-call, fire is just the fifteen per training session and per call-out. Got it.
The equipment, I mean, is that almost six year-to-date, but you budgeted three? Did you get some new equipment this year that you're good with for next year than the.
Yeah, we have. A lot of stuff got repaired this year and is in otherwise good shape. We also have pretty new equipment that I don't suspect is going to need repair.
And the structure maintenance also went from twelve to three? Like twelve year-to-date?
That was garage door repairs.
Yeah, or like four of them.
Yeah, and there's still one in Malvin's, but I'm pretty sure that's works, but it's manual. We need to get back on to.
Takes about five minutes opening the door.
So, but that one is in Malvin's underneath the garage door contracts.
Overall, this budget is four thousand dollars lower in twenty-five than twenty-four, right?
That's fine to me.
Good work.
A for effort, yep.
You'll get my good work at the end of next year.
Good, good.
Yep.
All right, thank you, bye.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Does he speak to disaster, or do you, if they have questions?
Oh, yeah, it's a ma, it's a master. Disaster management, I'm trying to make it one more. So we typically budget some training costs, um, for staff to, you know, do ICS classes if they're available. And then supplies. Like when we did our Alaska Shield, the printer was very, 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 very slow. That was one thing we talked about, maybe getting a better printer, affordable, but.
Is Heather paid by print?
Heather's paid by print, okay.
Well, slower than this year.
I did, yes.
But I mean, even just our budget to what has been spent has been lower, so.
Go around.
Doctors, you win.
They did?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I thought maybe we'd have to take a break for Susan.
It's been my life for sixteen years.
I used to be a manager.
Yeah, so glad being you.
Ex-cub factor, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
Too many cubs.
Okay, so library, um, is here.
I don't know if there's any.
What's FTE?
Oh, um, I can answer that.
I know you can.
Okay. It's a complex one because they have some part-time and they have some shared employees between them and the museum. So we have a total of.
Use your mic.
Hmm?
Use your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave it to Justin. Uh, we are also sharing the director now, so, um, it is at four-point-three FTE.
Okay. And the only other place that would be shared is with the museum?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And fully staffed, are they? Currently staffed, budgeted for fully staffed, or?
They are fully staffed.
Yes.
They just became fully staffed, hasn't been moved out.
Congratulations.
Going into the new year, fully staffed. So you wanna, maybe we could just go to museums and.
Yeah, and I was just gonna comment on the library, most of that just looks like insurance increase, pretty much, so.
That's correct, yeah. We did cut most, uh, some small sections of the operating budget that I.
I just wanna see the book number go back up someday.
Um, we are getting some grants through Friends of Library, so there is some other finances that are going into there that.
Good work, yeah.
Yes, Ashley does a great job of getting funding through other sources for both the library and the museum. I mean, often runs through Friends of Library or Historical Society, so it's not necessarily, but it keeps our costs lower.
Perfect.
Um, I'm not sure what phase the museum is in.
I mean, it's.
Fifteen. What's the FTE on museum?
Three-point-one-three.
What kind of crazy number is that?
It's the actual number.
I know, I'm just teasing.
We have one quarter in, is it one quarter in library and three quarters?
One quarter in, yeah, one quarter in library, three quarters in museum, is the cultural representation.
But that comes to four-four-three.
Some of our others are like point-eight-eight, point-seven-five, and.
We do have some.
Point-five-five.
Three quarters and under. I wanna be point-five-five.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's. If you can have that health increase and still be under your point-four budget, then.
You're killing.
Again, you'll get my kudos at the end of next year, but it looks good on paper.
Yeah.
So Corolla Center is doing very well. Um. And that salary is just part FTE. One person, yes.
Okay.
Some temp. Some temp, some chap, yeah.
Yes, and we did, um, we talked through the temps and we need them. But it's a serious, long days in, almost a couple weeks in. Um, after, during service at six and something else at nine.
And it's an exempt position, right?
It is exempt then.
Well, and we are trying to sell the building, so we. Don't want someone talking very, we want the salad, we want the salad.
Yep, um.
I don't have any questions on it.
It's great work.
Museum, that road, sixteen. Okay, so this position, the info tech. So last year we had a, um, IT cord, IT director in the budget. Um, I worked a lot, I've been doing a lot of IT, I've been working with Stan a lot, who's Arctic IT, he's kind of our customer rep. And, um, I, we don't need a person who can fix servers or do coding or those kinds of, that's what we pay Arctic IT for. And we pay them well. So I'm proposing this info tech position, um, as a person who can help with meetings. It's a union position, so there would be some OT probably. It's just so hard to know until we actually maybe find a person to do it. My biggest goal for this position, though, is that right now our computer inventory.
Schedule, yes.
Schedule and inventory is chaos. I mean, it's crazy, we need to, and we can get help, Arctic IT has everything we need, we just need to get it into a spreadsheet. We need to get somebody managing it and somebody budgeting for computers. Um, that's my major goal for this position, is for somebody to take that on and get it done.
Exactly, so do you do onsite installs?
Yep, so like, um, Melvin will be helping in this next week, put in some battery, uh, backups that went down. They just got here yesterday. So he'll help do that, I've been helping do this project that we, um, are doing to upgrade our security. Um, with everybody upgrading their computers. So this person would be that in-between for Arctic IT, we do need that, we do need somebody who can be like. You got a new computer, go to open and help them get through the whole, you know, getting it ready to go. Currently, we're kind of doing that on our own, on the phone with Arctic IT. So that's what that position is, I, it's not a new position, it's a different position.
Does IT do anything at all with the theater, or is all of that equipment a volunteer position? Or how is that stuff handled?
So Arctic IT does not, so there aren't a part of that. Um, my expectation would be that this person would learn it. Um, you know, and, and be an asset to the Corolla Center, you know, theaters and that kind of stuff, and also be able to train. Because she does have some temporary employees who, who wanted to delay, and she's, she was reaching out to the high school tech group to see if there's some interest in learning the soundboard and stuff. Josh Pearson is a, does it for us now.
Yeah, cause I remember there being something out about training for that, for community members interested in training, and there was interest. Like with Brian, I think Brian Knowles was helping with that a lot, and he was willing to train people for that. So that it wasn't necessarily a paid position, if responsible for that.
Cause I think it's important for this, if, this position to understand it and, you know, be able to help if needed, so. And especially in here, I think that's why, you know.
Yeah.
We've been doing well. Let me say it, I'm proud of us.
Come a long way.
It's a long way, but.
No dixing, dixing.
Okay, so that's what that is. Any questions or?
So is that a full-time person?
Half.
Half to.
I think that's a better idea for that position, and I think half-time is doable because we really are paying Arctic IT for a lot of services that they should be helping with. And Stan has just a phone call away, so.
Yeah.
Have to get full health insurance.
Do we have someone for this already? Or we're still, okay.
We look, but we haven't even.
But we budgeting for next year?
I wanna put it in the budget, and it's, it's not an existing person as of now.
Okay.
And then, um, yes, our code, or our union contract, too?
It is the union contract, it does not call it out for whether you're full-time or part-time, everyone pays the same portion of the premium.
But they get, they get insurance at, as part-time?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this was a full-time position.
Yeah, it was last year, but like one, well, I guess it's there.
Yeah.
As a full-time director exempt, and now it's a half-time.
Union, right, like it's.
Great. Winnie?
Uh, facilities utilities is not a person. But it might be a good place for street lighting at some point.
Right. Yeah, I've got a question, a little electrical Corolla Center, actual since two thousand and three.
Two thousand and twenty-three?
Two thousand and twenty-three. It's incredibly low.
Oh, so.
Oh, no, that, that year they got the, um, oh, what's it called, the, the credit?
Yeah.
PC, yeah.
And we put it all to one building, right? Or something happened.
No, it was for this building.
It was for this building.
Specifically for that account.
Yes, okay.
Um, you'll see some of them throughout dip down a certain year, and I'm not sure why we get it some years and not other years, but, yeah. Or some accounts and not other accounts.
I remember thanking them, the, we got that big check and that they were proud.
It was a lot.
It's a massive check.
To give it, yeah, it was nice.
Say some more about it.
So for the.
Chamber.
The chamber, is that because we haven't decided on the lease for the building?
We pulled it, we put.
We felt it was more appropriate to have it down in the other entities in-kind services, both the water sewer refuges and the heating oil. Um, cause that's accurate, that's, that is something of a service that we're paying for that. In-kind, yep.
But why is board, oh. It's, okay, so two things are zeroed?
Yes, heating oil and water sewer refuges.
We never were paying the electricity there.
I believe it's already down in in-kind.
It is.
Oh, how weird.
Yeah, so some things were up above and some things were down below, and we're just gonna be consistent.
Good. It's on you.
We're getting closer, that's our actual rule.
Are you gonna move the twenty-six for the street lighting, sixty-two, what was that number?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, but I think I'm wrong, I think it is sixty-one or two. No, I missed it, sixty-five.
Where had it, it had, oh, it's, we haven't gone to it yet, streets.
And we, yeah, maybe facilities, even though it's not a facility, that's the issue, that's the thing.
But it's a utility, so it needs one of those two words.
Add it in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Melvin's gonna be pissed, where is he?
Now it's his weather.
And what's his budget?
They call it facilities utilities, but you have no control.
Right, right. Now he has less control, cause we're giving him streetlights.
Even better.
And is there just, you guys just generally put a percentage in there, a random number, it's gonna increase? Obviously, everything's gonna increase.
Yeah, are we talking for the.
For facility utilities.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, we tried to see how it was tracking for this year and given the actual.
Okay.
Yeah. We went through each of these lines and really did put in.
I, I mean, it looks like.
Thought process of, is this accurate, yeah.
Right. Thank you for that.
Crystal Paul.
Yeah. Oh, but one thing I will say about CUC, speaking of, because it could really impact streetlights, is that they are, or have, developed a new winter rate, which is less. It's trying to encourage fisheries, winter fisheries and just getting.
Well, they're trying to encourage, except the streetlights is the other thing they're trying to.
Streetlights is a tariff, it's a, it's a flat amount per light, isn't it? Per their, per their, per their tariffs.
On their, on their free schedule or whatever?
Streetlights is a.
It depends, not all of them are that way. We do have some that are metered, like main streets metered, so parts, parts of town are metered.
Okay. And they're off a lot in the summer when rates are higher, so it could help it a little.
Yeah, can hear.
Certainly for the ones that are metered, yeah, ones that aren't metered at a flat rate.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
But it will help also the Corolla Center, you have to hit your cap rate, and then everything after that becomes six cents a kilo, so. So, that was good news.
We should close for the summer. We should close for the summer.
Okay, so we're on to, everybody good? On to Public Works Administration. And Kevin is here for this and the remainers of these public work things.
And he's under on that one.
So that's one FTE, right?
Yes.
And it's just under even with the insurance.
He might be a wash with the 15%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is still good.
Yep, still good. And facility maintenance, maintenance is Malvin, right?
Two.
Two FTEs.
And.
And two.
And who's retiring in December? What are we going to do?
He hasn't put his letter in yet.
He hasn't? We'll drag his feet.
Yeah, he's retiring.
I think that's why.
He did, he did put his letter in.
Oh, he did. I think maybe that's why that's a little bit lower. You're expecting, you know, lower salaries, I think.
Yeah, Malvin and Joe.
June.
Yeah, the water guy, you know, Malvin and Joe.
That number is not much higher.
And fire panels, that's the moving of the fire panel? The very bottom of that?
Yes. It's just, Malvin kind of is the coordinator of all the stuff, the fire system.
So it's just. With the increase in insurance, but also offset of the salary.
Street maintenance. How many bodies?
One superintendent, four operators. So five FTE.
And they're missing a superintendent?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're staffed with the four body?
Yes.
And so that number's actually 747. I guess we take that 65 out of there, right? From the streets?
Yes.
Is the boiler maintenance, public safety, is that, is that the old city hall where the fire department is?
Yes.
Did, did they, did we renegotiate a contract with the state for the state troopers down there?
We just approved it.
It's in process right now.
Okay.
That was also for the four mile substation. There was a split between public safety building and the four mile substation.
We did add maintenance to, in there for the four mile substation, which are to your or monitors.
Where's that?
It's just part of boiler maintenance.
Oh, you just put it in the same one?
Safety.
Got it, public safety, got it. Tomorrow's Halloween. It hasn't snowed yet.
That's right.
Two years later.
Doesn't, don't the guys at the shop have a board going?
Yep. That's not a first snowfall.
Okay.
Anchorage got it.
Is chip seal line totally out of the picture for us these days?
I mean, it's not, but it's, it's one of those things that have gone back and forth. Like you put in the budget, you put in capital projects. So it was in the ARPA capital projects, but we do not have money to fund that through that.
Does the Malle Commission allow or have funding for something like that?
Uh, they're very.
Yeah, like, yeah, it's not as strong as it used to be, that's for sure.
And we can look into it this year when we put their new stuff out. I don't know what, you know.
Yeah, it was just curious.
So it's typically, I mean, 60 to 75,000 dollars for multiple tanks. We do have the chips. We didn't get those from Eagle. So we have a good supply of chips, pretty.
You got on that, Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, if I could just make my pitch for chips.
For the oil.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, besides the fact that we all know that our roads need maintenance and it's been quite a few years since we've done it. Um, I also only have two guys on the crew currently. One of them is in the maintenance or in the mechanics department that actually have chip seal experience. There's rumor that one of the guys may be retiring sometime in the next year or two. And so I would love to get some chip seal money to not only repair the streets, but for my current crew to get some training on how it's done. Because it is going to be a lot more expensive if we lose that experience and we have to bring somebody in to train them how to do it, so.
Good pitch.
What's the number?
She's got 60, 70, 80.
Yeah, depends on what oil going for every year, but it's probably going to be 70 or 80, something like that. If we're going to get enough to really do something that's impactful for the community.
Does that use that recycled oil?
No.
No, yeah.
And it gets shipped down.
Yeah, there's only certain times of the year that you can purchase it when the oil plants are producing.
I would, I would support that and also state that the longer we let these road, the chip seal roads without maintenance, the worse it gets and the more it's going to cost us to keep them updated. It's, it's pretty important to keep maintenance on those roads. And that's a huge service to the community. It really keeps the dust down and there's lots of issues with that that is really great for this community.
Okay, well, I'm going to go out on a limb then and suggest that we put 80,000 in that line item. And remember, this is our first time going through it. We'll keep going through and keep going through and keep going through, so.
You mean in the capital budget out of the permanent fund? Oh, no, sorry.
I just.
Just kidding.
There's a line item there.
I see it.
So put it in there.
55025.
I don't want to disrupt what we're doing now or that should be a capital item project. I just wanted to at least get out what I had to say, so. Whether it comes from here or from another source, so.
Well, I mean, it is, it Thomas Point and moving forward. I mean, it just needs to be something that's budgeted.
Yep. I'm watching my road disappear. Just put it in for now. We'll go from there.
It's in.
Got it.
And the other.
Oh, everybody in the audience is like, what? I could have gone up there and said, what?
So at 70 to 80, how much should we get?
Depends on how much the oil costs, yeah.
I'm going to leave you an estimate.
But you have the chips, so that's good.
Yeah.
You would, you would know better, I haven't been involved with it.
I mean, typically we, you know, a previous cost of 65, we'd get two tanks. But I don't know what, you know, it's costing now in two tanks. You could do quite a few. I mean, there's a lot of work, free work that you have to do before, you know, to get everything leveled and drained and that kind of stuff.
I was wondering how we change this, so if you're 80,000 dollars, let's have a thought on how that, how far.
Just for how much we bought in the past and just the increase in costs since that last purchase. I, it's just really just throwing a number out there that if we spent 60 about three or four years ago, I would say that it's going to be at least 80, 60. To get the same amount that we got in previous purchases.
But how much did we get in previous purchases?
I think it was like you said, two tanks. But what does two tanks get you?
He means the number of feet of road.
I mean, I can tell you off the top of my head, like miles, I could find that out for you. We did, the last time we did it, we did.
Oh, you did four street.
Four streets.
Upper Davis.
Upper Davis, we did, uh, somewhere else.
Well, what year?
I don't know.
Anyway, we could get you a mileage for that, but I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I feel like Luna was the one covered in chip seal and she died a while ago. The dogs love to lay in it when it's hot. And then it's all over them and then it's all over your house.
In the past, have we had to purchase the chip as a part of the price? So we were saying we have a supply of that. So 80,000, 60,000, whatever, might go farther.
Might go farther.
Okay. Great.
Okay, uh, we're there, snowmobile. This is kind of a little bit of a guess because you just never know. Any questions?
No.
Kevin can address them.
Do snowpox, are they 12-year events?
No. They're never, never.
100 years.
Oh, good, we got time.
We'll get a fee of money if that happens.
It was 2012, right? 12 to 13 or 11 to 12? 11, 12, okay.
Okay, then we have equipment maintenance, which is two FTEs, two things.
And staffed, currently staffed?
Yes. And all of our employees participate in the whole.
Mechanics and operators.
Yes.
And supervisor, if there's one.
Yeah, if needed, just.
But not public works district.
Maybe tradeable. He's got too much paperwork, Bushman. His days in the field are over.
For trouble and snow. I am willing to do whatever.
I appreciate it.
Yes, I shovel snow.
I just know, be managing over a union group, then there would be some pushback.
Yes. Same with the supervisor. Uh, any questions?
No.
Anything else, Kevin?
Uh, did we do equipment maintenance?
We just did.
Because it was under.
I'm out of here.
5K low. Can't complain.
Okay, parts maintenance. Samantha is here.
This is three FTE with one of them gone for, I think, four and a half months pre-plant. So we budgeted it.
Gone like?
I believe out of town, they're getting some professional development things on their own.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he's going to school for a little while. So this is Samantha.
Nice to have you here.
Everyone else in?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Someone else fooded.
Are there any big projects planned for next year for parts maintenance? Or just keeping steady?
Keeping steady, yeah.
And it is. They're putting some grants, I believe, grant money or COVID money for the snack shack at the ball field. And that was going to get resided. That seemed to have got postponed or went away. Any update on that, where those funds went to?
Well, that was COVID money. And that was, yeah, that money's gone. And that RIP, I believe, went out and did not get a response from what I can remember. We worked on the RIP. I guess I'm not sure if it went out with no response.
Mayor speaking as the mayor, I think we should turn over the ball fields to the Blue League and have them do it. I think they do have some plans for modifying the snack shack with their own funds.
We did, yeah, we had a comp, maybe that was it, we.
So I think they want to put another level on there, put storage and a crow's nest on it and do all the siding and everything at the same time. But I don't know the exact plans, but I just know that there's been talk of that with, I know Wilson's Construction has been in on the discussions of that, so. But anyway, I.
Okay, that wasn't coming out of parts and rep funds, then?
No, I think they were planning on doing that on their own.
Oh, thank you.
Well, they'd have to start by approaching you with something.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just if that's accurate.
It's just in the talk stage.
Yeah.
We're talking all things recreation with Sam there. Under Badarki, that's a significant difference between 25 and 24, like it isn't.
There's no salaries.
There's no wages at some.
Yeah.
All holdout.
She's a volunteer.
Not quite.
JK.
You're doing three jobs, aren't you?
I, yes, I am right now.
Welcome to the city.
Right? Stir me right in.
And, uh, we don't have HVAC in here.
No.
No, that was the one that wasn't.
What do we rent for parts? Parts maintenance?
That's for our vehicle.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Based on the discussion earlier ago, I did add the HVAC to the recreation swimming pool. Line item.
Equipment and furnishings?
Yeah.
What does that bring you up to?
Uh, 54,500.
So that does include the pool pump and the.
Soft cell replacement.
Yeah, the soft cell. Those are both items that we pushed off last year when we decided to do the pool liner. We wanted to wait until the pool actually was up and running again before we bid off more than we can chew with that. So it was something we could put off while we were seeing if the pool liner would actually hold. And it did, so now we're going to move forward with the rest of the project.
And so Badarki is just going to be staffed with temps, is that it? Oh.
Well, right now it is.
But Jake, we also now have.
Yeah, they have a programmer.
But they're in Hadman.
Right.
Oh, I see, you just moved people to different places.
We eliminated a halftime position. That's why we're going to regions there. But there are people who will be at.
Badarki.
But they are doing a specific job which falls under Hadman.
The drones aren't doing Badarki.
And swimming pool, what's, what was staffed there?
Three.
Are currently at three, or is that one of the hats you're wearing?
That's one of the hats I'm currently wearing. I do have a vacancy for a full-time lifeguard, but I just had training over the weekend and do have an applicant for that position.
Okay.
Pool ops leader?
Pool ops leader just came out today, so hopefully we'll get someone in that position. Soon, so.
Any other?
So with the heating oil. Cost, that, that, this didn't move down, the new HVAC, is that right?
It is. There's a few ideas also that we've had for that. The new HVAC, the retrofit for it came in for about 25,000. When we, when Duncan was here, we met with someone just to see if we could get it back. Kind of defactory settings. The last time it was touched, I think, was in 1984. So a lot has been changed since then.
To generate.
To no fault to anybody, you know, we're just trying, so just trying to get it back and maybe upgrade it a little bit to a more automated system to help the airflow in there. Because I think we are losing a lot of heat because of that. So it wasn't the whole HVAC replacement, just a retrofit for it.
Good investment.
And we had someone actually look at it and said they could do it. That's impressive.
I asked that question.
Like this wasn't like on the phone.
It's not huge tweaks to it.
That's.
And some of it can be done in-house.
The fact that it's as old as it is and someone is wanting to come.
They actually are very excited to see it. We can't believe this. This still exists. I'm like, yay.
Retrofit this retro.
You're going to pay us sort of a nostalgia.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, like parts.
Yeah, I answered.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
In between there was, um.
Thank you, Sam.
No question there.
No.
Which is more under.
You're in there for the cemetery.
And that's more under facilities, right? Or at least Malvin. Yeah.
Just numerically.
I know. It very much bothers me.
Me too. Consistency.
I know. It is important.
Non-partemental?
Well, we're on ski hill, yeah.
Kind of talk about that a little bit in the memo part.
I'm okay with that till we care more. And don't get me wrong, I support the ski hill, but I just. I'm not going to be responsive to, responsive to us.
Same for your summer.
Jake, our favorite department.
Non-department.
Yeah, so we've.
Covers so much.
Yeah, and we've tried to really clean it up, so.
When was the last time we had a lobbyist? Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen?
No, it was more recent than that.
It must have been nineteen.
Twenty-two, isn't it?
When did?
Well, we hired Vinnie mate for the, um.
Harvard.
Harvard. But it was a short, it was a shorter contract.
I think when Helen started, we got rid of, so twenty or twenty-one?
Well, that's when the state quit having any money to worry about fighting about.
Right. I don't, yeah.
Yes, it looks like the last time we made a payment was October two thousand twenty.
And AML is killing it. And we get a lot of emails from them and we're in groups that do Zooms with other groups from across the state, which I guess isn't always lobbying, but going to those conferences is, you know, yeah, where they, I think I just forwarded you guys an email about the resolutions that they're interested in passing and whatever. So that's where council stays up on it for us, mayor, council. You guys are the lobbyists.
We've been pretty good with having students.
Absolutely.
And then Stevens is the speaker of the senate, so.
Has been helpful.
Our efforts.
But it shouldn't go away from there. Let's just leave it in as a line item so we remember.
Just curious, are attorney fees how consistent are they year-to-year?
Depends on the, year, yeah, yeah, you know, I think I, we talked about this year leaving an NIB because we will be not having the as much involvement as we've had. Between the sales tax code and the exemptions, there has been a lot.
Do we have an outstanding bill? Because I feel like.
It seems low. I almost think they might be a month or two behind.
Yeah, I think we do. We're anticipating at least a larger one this next time.
Yeah, I do say that that year-to-date is probably not.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that it's a good representation of normal-ish years unless we have some kind of major.
Lawsuit? Code changes, big code adoptions. Did you, you said ninety, but it's at a hundred here. You want it at a hundred?
We have a couple items that are carrying on into twenty-five.
They are extremely busy and I'm fearful that they may drop clients because they can't find staff either. So. I, I think they're very good at what they do. I think they're the best in Alaska and we're lucky to have them.
Keep us out of pot water.
That for sure.
I guess a couple of things I would point out is that the insurance is also spread throughout enterprise funds. So six fifty is not our insurance total.
And that is liability here.
That is liability insurance. The health reimbursement agreements had never really been budgeted in the past. We, we budgeted them last year. The city reimburses, um, deductibles.
Above five hundred, like the employees are responsible for the first five hundred and then we reimburse after the first five hundred up to a thousand dollars per employee. Because that's also for families, you would get a two thousand dollar deductible. And that start, that started before I was, I don't know the origin of that.
But assuming you get, you were able to have a little higher deductible which in insurance.
It's supposed to help us on insurance, but man, is it?
Doesn't seem like it, right?
Maybe not just that.
So we, we, I mean, that is on my list. Like I never have been involved in insurance before.
But is the forty-five hundred year-to-date accurate?
So far, but we see most of those claims come in at the end of the year. People submit their form with their.
Yeah.
Proof that they've met their deductible. Usually towards the end of the year, I think a reminder usually goes all around October.
I know, but I think we have until March to do it.
You do.
Of the new year, so I, I would think most of them come first three months, but you think mostly last end. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The IT services, is that the Arctic IT contract?
Yes.
So I thought we had, uh, budgeted for a IT person elsewhere in this budget. So do we still need that contract?
Yes. So I don't know, maybe you missed the discussion. We had the discussion on a part-time IT person, which last year we had an IT director in the budget. So now, after working with Arctic IT and learning a little bit, I don't feel like we need a director level position. So this person, which doesn't exist right now, would be a liaison between Arctic IT and physical things on the ground here, such as Malvin is going to be replacing UPS batteries with, at the server with Arctic IT to help set up computers, plug things in for Arctic IT, that kind of thing. And then my biggest goal for this position would be to get our computers and probably cell phones into a.
Schedule for replacement.
And I think mostly computers for replacements, you know, so that we can keep up. Because it's, at some point, already, you know, they're not being supported, that they don't have Windows ten. We had to dump all the Windows sevens. Now Windows eleven is on all the new computers and at some point they're threatening not to do, not, not Arctic IT. Windows won't support ten. So we have to keep things moving. But right now it's just in chaos. So that's my big, one of my big things for that position. And then to just kind of help staff, you know, with some, I'm hoping we get somebody who's really good.
Right, because each staff member, it's so hard when, I mean, that's a lot to have to know. Even to just set up your computer or when you're purchasing things that go with the programming that you need on your computer, you need assistance with that. And Sam doing it or Cheryl doing it is kind of silly and that's what's been happening.
So Arctic IT does.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with having an IT person. I, I kind of go maybe a little further that I, I kind of disagree with contracting Arctic IT. I think we should have more money for a full-time dedicated IT person, but.
We had an empty IT director for months, maybe.
Year, more than.
On and off since I've been here.
Yeah, and we've had.
Ethan, before that, don't, we had a contract then.
So the work that Arctic IT does is high-end. I mean, the programming, they're making sure our servers are working. They're getting new domains for the police department because they have to have a different, they can't be incorporated with the city because of new federal laws. I mean, the things that they do.
You don't know if a person would exist that could be our IT director and do everything Arctic IT does.
We get our money's worth from that. They have saved our bacon so many times and when Maldees had that breakdown, you know, we have the stuff to not be.
Yeah.
You know, like that. So it, I just can't say enough on the importance of Arctic IT. And I think that it's a good idea. We can save some money for an IT person here, so. Because we pay them the big bucks, let them do the work.
And we found that even though we had the director position for even whatever a couple of months it was, we still had to have their services, sort of.
Absolutely.
A really good IT director went to work for Arctic IT.
Yes.
Yes, we do have a direct line to somebody on the.
That's good, too.
It is good. Any, uh, I mean, do you want any, any other questions or?
So they have debt service, long-term debt service?
Shoot, do you know what each of those is?
We've, we've had a report in the past that's had a schedule.
Yeah, that would be nice to see.
What's, you know.
I think we asked for that.
When does this one paid off? When is this one paid off? So that we can kind of see how these are dropping off?
Oh, we.
Can we look for that again?
Yep.
Well, and even part of like, when are they dropping off? And we can, we're going to need more bonds, so I mean, it's just the future that we're in. So if we can roll one into it or potentially, I know it's election, it's voted on.
Um, we did get contacted by the bond bank about refinancing the opportunity with the bonds. They do it as places want to get bonds, like they cool, they can get better rates. And it was pretty substantial savings for the city. So we talked with Cash Fest, which is the company that's helping us find things like Am领 and do money organizing and works, also works with Blake. So we're going to investigate that and move down that road. You can, there are lawyer fees involved, but you can roll those into the actual fees or the actual bond reinvestment, you know, kind of like refinancing your house. So we're looking into that and that was pretty exciting. It was all, did I want to say three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in potential savings?
Okay, well, life of them.
Over the life of the ones.
But what does that do to your?
Doesn't put them out further. That was the first thing I asked her also.
Yep, yeah.
Same term, but like same end date. That'd be huge.
So that is one thing that we're looking into too.
Cautiously optimistic.
Yes, remain cautiously optimistic.
Sounds way too good. So we, we, and we will also involve the bond lawyer that we have that works at Burt's. To make sure.
Is there someone?
Doing, yeah, Michael Schwartz.
Oh, good.
He did the arm loan.
It had been Klinkner forever and he's retired.
So are you wanting to look at debt reimbursement schedules during budget? Or is this something you want to talk about?
Maybe for that long-range planning work session that we might have soon.
If, if we're looking at doing projects, then yeah. When we're doing projects, it doesn't have to be for the budget, but, I mean, because, you know, right now they're.
The payments are the payments, yeah.
Unless you can refinance, but.
Strategic planning, long-term planning.
Yeah, if we're gonna, you know.
That's what it'd be nice is.
Do another bond that has a, you know, if this.
Yep.
Or forget to put.
The bond goes away, we can save a million dollars, then we can do another million dollars worth of bonding.
Or forget a fancy budget book. That would be a good piece to go in like this, you know? Comprehensive look at things. Sorry.
No, I can get that, yep.
So the three twenty-four is what you explained in your memo, correct?
The grant match?
Yes.
So a different fund will, should have been attached to this. You guys made it. I didn't see it on the second worksheet. And the three twenty-four would be going out in that fund, right? Sorry about that.
No, I should have mentioned that too.
Are we at other entities?
Yeah.
In addition to the hospital lowering their ask, they kind of saved us on the one tel. Insurance. They stay partnered with us. They could have split us off and they've chosen this year to stay partnered with us. They would have received a twenty-five percent increase instead of a thirty-five, but we would have been up to a forty-five percent increase, so.
We're bad.
Big thank you to CCMC again.
Wow. Yeah, kudos there.
I guess some of the old folks need to retire.
Oh, you can't say that.
I'm teasing. I was talking about myself. I wasn't there. Yes, I was. I was talking about myself.
Now you know what she pays ditch in a training.
Andy flipping over there. You have to go through the whole training again.
That'll help get me, after tomorrow, I'll be point five five, like I wanted.
And now the insurance just went up another two percent.
My building.
Liability.
No, the attorney fees. We're not loud. Nobody saw it.
I don't know.
You guys know my opinion on that.
Yeah, this is it.
We really don't need to go into that again. Right here's your chip seal, hundred forty thousand. I just, I still think we need to get rid of that building and put it in here, give it the mayor's conference room.
No, that's a rentable space.
Yeah, it makes fifty thousand dollars a year, the entire Cordova Center.
But it's also used.
And we pay seventy thousand.
But it's used all the time by staff.
Yeah, it, it does get used.
Well, and I guess I'll go back to, we just, do we need to subsidize their building? We don't need to find them a new home. That's not our responsibility and.
And maybe.
Why? That's it.
What I mean. So if we don't, I mean, like I don't know how to say this, but I, there's cash and there's a building.
Yeah, yeah, they're two separate things, absolutely. So they want cash or do they want a building? What's the most benefit to them? Right now they have both, and why?
Or, yeah, to, can, yeah, I mean, I think there's options to look at just besides a building. I, I always say this, there are not people knocking down the door to rent places on Main Street. Although I know it's a baleer and it's, it is a possibility that it could go residential. Coated correctly for that.
For the.
Zone.
Chamber, zone, sorry.
Yeah.
I think.
There's a possibility, I guess, but then we're a landlord to a. But then we're a landlord to a, unless we're selling a straight outway, which we don't do now typically.
But we've never sold a building at all recently, have we?
We sold the.
Yeah.
That was the last.
Oh, yeah. And it was a lease option, okay. Oh, yeah, but they destroyed it, right? Was that a lease option? No, that was straight across. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Straight across.
We sold, we didn't lease it. We crashed it because they.
All right, I learned, forget it.
Something. It's a, yeah, I don't know.
So what, I'm just going to throw this out. What I'd like to do is here are the totals of where we're at with what we did tonight and what the staff has put in here as it is. And sleep on it. And I know we're having another work session. And we've asked her a few things to be changed or updated, like the insurance. And there were a few things you spotted.
She has some things updated in the sheet.
Well, yeah, you may have those, but I'd also like to see them.
Well, I just went through the total that she didn't have right now.
Right.
That's what I was looking for right now is that with the eighty thousand in there, are there other things you're discussing?
Okay. So we have a revenue total now is thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four twenty-eight.
Okay.
And expenditure total is fifteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, four oh one, with a deficit of one million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine seventy-three.
Okay.
It's a little better. It's a lot better.
Pleasure. So.
Went down two mill rates.
Yeah, we added it too.
No, no, but you're down from the deficit. The deficit was one nine, now it's one four.
Half a million, which is.
I don't know how my other council members feel, but what, I have done budgets before and what I'd like to do now is go back through it on my own and ask questions of Sam and have them be able to work on it, give us maybe another version before we meet again. Are we meeting next week?
Yeah.
We are. So.
What are you asking for us to do?
Well, just do what you spotted tonight, that you found things like we can update the insurances, right?
I did that, in those totals, okay, yeah.
Yeah, just clean printout for us before the next meeting or you can.
Email that.
Just put all the changes we just made today. You don't need to, we're not asking you to make the ten percent cut yet or anything like that.
And I'm going to say this because you have Excel, it would be helpful to see is, yes, we have one point four million deficit. I would like to see, and you can do it with Excel, that's why I'm saying it, of that, what is things out of our control? Break that out. Of the one point four, seven hundred thousand is stuff we have zero control over, step increases or insurance increases, any of those things, that would be helpful too.
Okay.
Because then we know an actual number we're working with.
Yes, we don't have control over those step increases because we're contractually obligated. But you still, I mean, everything you do have control over still. I would just argue back that you still do get to determine staffing level.
Sure.
Not that I think that that should at all be on the, on the chopping block, but.
But it gives us two different numbers to look at.
Okay.
Where what's our, what's associated with a FTE and a headcount and what's associated with, and I'll just say, pencils and paper and projects.
Okay.
Something like bonds, we don't have any control over what we're paying.
Yeah, that's good.
That is what it is.
And I just, you know, I, I wrote down, I want to read a little bit. I have a few questions about things, but this is, I think it's a great start.
Much better than last year.
I think, yeah, you've done a great job.
We've learned and improved and, the processes, not saying where our money's at, I'm saying the processes.
Transfers to other entities allowed to be changed?
I guess, so is that task clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you could probably assume that.
Absolutely, I would love, yep, I would love to see before. Yep. Now, help me to digest it and be ready, prepared for the work session.
And next week we're doing this again and Enterprises is going to push up a week.
I don't know, we're going to have to push the Enterprises back.
We can see, we can see the Enterprises going, say, anytime they're ready.
Yeah.
We've been, yeah, we've been focusing on basically making sure we have the information for the upcoming. So not a whole lot's been done there yet.
And Council, that really has a whole lot to say about enterprise funds anyways.
Except for rates. So we could squeeze them in next week with, being able to get this.
But we're supposed to meet next week at five. We have a six forty-five public hearing and then a seven o'clock regular meeting. So we have.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Bailey.
So where, where we're at, a one point four million deficit, is that about where we're at?
Correct.
So I understand we had a poor fishing season, but that's not one point four million deficit. Where, where does this big hole come from? Are these just costs that have increased and wages and other things that we're going to have to eat up? Or, you know, where did, where did the big deficit come from? I guess that's what I would be asking.
Yeah, you can compare along, along the lines individually what was, what was budgeted last year versus what was.
A lot of it looks like.
Councilmember Bailey, that's where I ask for the breakout in those items of what's personnel, what are other, whatever, bonds that we have to pay and then everything else. Just so we can have a better look at, I mean, if it's personnel, yes, we can not have that FTE, but we can also see that that was an increase and then determine a percentage of what is that increase.
Well, it, it seems like we got two choices, right? Either cut to the bone or raise taxes if we've got that big of a deficit. I mean, I'm sure there's some things we can possibly eliminate and curb down, but that's, that's a big margin.
Even from what I'm hearing with FTE, you guys have, you have been efficient in being creative with, you know, sharing directors and now we're looking at a part-time IT person, any of it's noted.
Yep, it's going to come down to what services you want and which services you want to pay for. And I can't say that I'm too fond about raising any more revenues. We already raised eight hundred thousand in revenues just today. So, yeah, there's going to have to be some hard decisions. Pretty soon. On what you want to do, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as far as raising any more revenues and I'm, I would not want to raid the permanent fund either. So it's going to be tough. Thanks.
Yeah, I would look back in your, either your audits or your, your budget documents and compare where we were a few years ago to where we're at now. It's, it's been increasing, you know, I, I used to preach when I was on council that we can't be at eleven million dollar. You know, eleven million dollars ought to get us through the year for today. Now we're looking at fifteen, eighteen, fifteen.
But where's your grocery bill gone to from eleven to fourteen or fifteen? Probably up that same percentage and your utilities and your everything else. I'm just saying, so it's not.
Yeah, but I don't, but I, again, I don't think that we can, we can ask those citizens, those property owners that are buying those same groceries and paying those same bills to, and their property value going up without any cash coming into their pockets to, to keep paying more. I mean, they're, they're just, there isn't more in a lot of cases. So anyway.
They bring up a good point there, that, yes, costs are going up for individual families, but we've already been told by, people come in the meetings, you know what they're doing? They're cutting back. I mean, every individual family is cutting back to try to counter, counter action these, these inflation and cost upgrades. So I think the city's going to have to do the same thing.
I guess I just want to say that we have, there are multiple budgets that are less than what they were budgeted last year. We have, we have, I'm not saying that we can't do more, but I, I would appreciate that acknowledgement that we have done that.
Yeah, and, and I will say, you know, you go back and look through your audits, the city has always done a pretty good job of coming in under, under what their budget, under expenses and higher on their, on the revenues. The city has done a, a good job of, of doing that. And I appreciate that, you know, coming in under expenses that were budgeted, so.
But that doesn't help to make a balanced budget for the new year, unfortunately. I mean, I agree, but it's still hard.
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, out of the cost of goods goes up, but of the city, or the, the city's share, you know? So as groceries go up and fuel goes up, if we're looking at a sales tax revenue, that's a million dollars more than it was just a couple of years ago and property taxes is way up too. So I understand the city's cost is going up, but our revenues have gone up, maybe not commiserately, but they've gone up.
Okay, so are we good for next week?
So all you want from us for next week for the general fund is the exit we did here and then split into, you don't want any other, nothing else.
Just a clean.
Yeah, what you did tonight is just.
You might put a little star or something by the things that you think could, you know, if looking for something to do, by the things that you think could.
If you're looking for something to do.
That's what I'll do.
Oh, I see, you want the council members to do that.
I think it's part of our.
Mark the things that you think could be paid for with current.
Oh, okay. But, but within the budget, what about, what are things that are necessary and what are the not?
Bonds are necessary.
Okay. What about transfers to other entities? Can those be looked at? Has changed?
All of it's free game.
I would say anything we're all going to do, we're all going to do wages.
Grant matches.
We're obligated to grant matches.
Bonds.
Insurance.
Of course, you know, the school.
But I do want to be clear that, like, yes, we're obligated for wages and anything type personal, but I would like to see that broken out separately. And then you could do bonds separately and any other commitments that we have, grants, commitments. We're just, that would be helpful for me to see that.
We are committed to a portion of.
Sure, the minimum is like tiny, but yeah.
And before everybody gets away, thanks for coming to the meeting tonight.
Thank you all, you're hard work.
Next Wednesday you'll have comment time.
Did you adjourn?
Are we good? Everybody's good?
A stop.